Good evening. It is September 2nd, 2021. I'd like to welcome everybody to the Charlottesville City School Board, and I'd like to call the meeting to order. If you all join me, please, in a moment of silence. Thank you very much, and if you will now join us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you very much. Madam Clerk. Please proceed with roll call through the board members.
Yes, Madam Chair, Mr. Bryant.
Present.
Ms. Bryson-Whortberger. Dr. Kraft. Here. Ms. McKeever. Ms. Perrier.
Here.
Ms. Torres.
Yes.
Mr. Wade.
Yes.
And our student rep.
Yeah.
Thank you. I will now entertain a motion for approval of the proposed agenda. So move.
Second.
Any questions or discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Thank you. And now we have our first opportunity for comments from members of the community. If there's anybody in the media center, if you would please come up to the podium, state your name and address. You'll have three minutes for public comment. And then also, we will check and see if there's anybody zooming in who might be interested in providing comment.
Well, just remind attendees on Zoom if they would like to raise their hand on using that feature or put something in the chat, we will know to unmute you and give the three minutes for that speaking time.
Just a reminder that we do offer another opportunity for public comment towards the end of the meeting.
Yeah, this time there are no hands raised in the attendees gallery, and there are no chat messages indicating public speaking at this time.
Great, thank you. Okay, we're gonna move on then, and I again would consider a motion to accept the consent agenda or to adopt it.
So move.
Second. Any questions, discussion? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Thank you. All right, the next item on our agenda is our first action item for the evening, and this is the Charlottesville City School Board is proud and excited to present to you our next superintendent of Charlottesville City Schools. So I will entertain a motion, and that is Dr. Robert, I'm sorry, Royal Gurley.
Dr. Madam Chair, I would like to move, make a motion to move for the acceptance of the appointment of Dr. Royal A. Gurley Jr. for superintendent of the Charlottesville City School.
Second.
Any questions or discussion? I'm very, very excited. All right, and all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you so much. Thank you so much, everybody. I would like to take this moment to introduce to Charlottesville our next superintendent of Charlottesville City Schools, Dr. Royal Gurley. We do have our contracts here, so we are going to sign those in your presence, and then I would like to invite him up to make a statement if he so chooses.
Try again.
Hear me now, okay? Too much. Good evening, Madam Chair, board members, parents, and community members. I first want to thank the school board and community members for entrusting me to lead your school division. One thing that I've learned over the years is that you always say the most important thing first. So leading Charlottesville City Schools is not something that I take lightly. I believe as superintendent, I must continue to create opportunities for our students and help them to reach their fullest potential. In the coming weeks, I look forward to connecting with the amazing teachers, administrators, staff, students, and community members of this great city. I have seen firsthand already that there are so many wonderful things taking place here in CCS. I am excited about relocating here to Charlottesville, and hopefully one day in the near future, my children walk in the halls of Charlottesville City Schools. I would be remiss if I did not acknowledge three people before I close, and that's my mother, Beverly Gurley, who educated children in public schools for 42 years and modeled daily why relationships matter with students. My mother was one of my greatest teachers, is one of my greatest teachers and mentors. I also want to acknowledge my husband Derek for believing in this vision that I had five years ago and committing to be my greatest champion. And lastly, I want to acknowledge my father, who passed in 2016. But one thing that he always, one thing that always resonates with me is that he said, "Being kind will get you a long way." And in closing, I am reminded of a quote from James Baldwin that reads, "The purpose of education is to create in a person the ability to look at the world for himself and make his own decisions." I believe that Charlottesville City Schools will continue to create scholars that will not only make decisions, but will be our future leaders. This is my commitment to every learner, every day, and everyone of Charlottesville City Schools. Thank you.
Thank you again, Dr. Gurley. Also, I want to just extend my gratitude and thanks to this board who did a tremendous amount of work throughout the summer, throughout this process. I do want to extend our gratitude to the community, to staff, to everybody who participated in surveys, in feedback, and focus groups. So thank you for all of that. We appreciate you. I appreciate the board and am very grateful, and we are all very excited for Dr. Gurley to be here with us. So thank you. Yes, and there should be a press release. There should be more information. You can also check our website if you're interested in finding out more information, and he will be joining us officially the 4th of October as his first date. So thank you. All right. We are moving to items for discussion, and first up is we have our reconfiguration update. Kim Powell, thank you.
And here we go. We are fortunate to have with us again this evening our wonderful team from VMDO Architects led by Mr. Wicknox. So I'll be turning the podium over to him for this reconfiguration update.
Thank you, Kim. Let me get this, oh, you're gonna get it, get it started? Go ahead. And I'm gonna immediately turn it over to my colleague Kristen Hill to kick us off.
Thanks. Yeah, there we go. So lots of fun stuff going on with engagement, getting feedback on our schemes. We met with both the Walker and Beaufort staff, and we're also out at the Back to School Bash, engaging with lots of families and students in particular, which is a lot of fun. I'm looking forward to kicking off our building committee in September. We also have four peer engagers on board who have been doing great work, gearing up, reaching out to all different communities and brainstorming different stakeholder groups that they want to be reaching out to and getting moving on that. We're also teaming up with the UVA Youth and Social Innovation Capstone Course, who are gonna dive specifically into, over the course of the year, student projects focused on equity and community engagement in public process, and what does that look like in connection to the reconfiguration design process. Their main focuses for engagement right now, these are the back of a series of postcards that the peer engagers are out circulating to the community, is focused on the survey, getting feedback on our schemes in particular, and generating interest and feedback for the series of public meetings that are coming up, the school board, the city council, and joint work session, as well as, of course, our community design team meeting. So this is what we've been hearing so far about our different options. This is incomplete. We'll give more detail at the next community design team meeting on the 14th. But so far, we've heard some good feedback on all the different Beaufort schemes. What do we like? What's working well? And what could be better about each one? So I'm just gonna glaze through these quickly because we're still getting more feedback on this, but hearing lots about how important it is to have natural light. What do we want to be the focuses of the school? And where should we be focusing our dollars and impact? So this survey that these comments and ratings are coming from is still live, and we want to encourage as many people as possible to give feedback on the schemes in particular. And as we heard in the last community design team meeting, option three is still the running favorite, but they're close in the rankings, you can see there. And same thing on Walker, still getting feedback from all different stakeholder groups, hearing about, you know, differing opinions on more renovation versus new construction. And option two is still the favorite there, but more feedback to be had. So encourage everyone to take the survey and reach out.
Thank you, Kristen. The, yeah, the month of September is really kind of our big outreach effort to try to get as much back on the work today. So tonight, the new information that we're gonna present to you is the result of our second round of cost estimates. We presented this to the working group, I guess, last week, but this is the first public presentation of this information. And we're also gonna show you a little bit of the renderings that we're working on to try to generate some excitement. So as you know, our, and we discussed this last time, the direction from the working group was to look at schemes that tried to spend $60 million all at Beaufort to stay within the 140 to 150 square feet student range. The state average for a new middle school in the Commonwealth of Virginia is 151 square feet. We don't want to get below that. Sick with the 2023 construction start, mostly to fight inflation and not be giving $2 or $3 million to inflation and to don't compromise on energy performance. Meanwhile, the plan at Walker is to occupy Building A with as little money as we can for it. We've kind of talked about it as camping out in Building A and then develop some schemes that we would fund later for a standalone pre-K center at Walker. So I want to start with Walker first. So we have kind of those three conditions, the existing condition that we would occupy, and then the two schemes that we have been looking at and discussing with the CDT are really about occupying the north part of the site, uphill part of the site that's closest to 250, or occupying the downhill part of the site, the south part of the site that's closest to Rose Hill. And that's what those two circled options are. So this is option one, which builds on the uphill side of things. These are some renderings that are in process. They're being cooked. Come the CDT, these things will be a lot more developed and hopefully some extra wants to go with it. Just a little preview of kind of what we're talking about with that scheme that builds in the parking lot and then extends down towards where the current playfield is at the Walker campus. And then creating a nice pre-K area that is somewhat the equivalent of the blacktop space that exists between the three buildings at Walker right now. Versus another option, a south option, where we would demolish Building C, build in its place, and then renovate Building B, the auditorium building. So it's no longer an auditorium, and it's part of the pre-K center. And this also allows us to use the building, both teams allow us to use the buildings and navigate the site. Right now, you can't get to that, the middle of that site, particularly if you're in a wheelchair. And so whether we use the building from the top to come to the middle, or from the bottom to come to the middle, are the ideas. And so this is kind of one of the, one of the fundamental choices, I think, facing us, is which side of the site to build on. And then this is a little section also showing how the benefit of demolishing C, C is seven feet lower than B, so we can build up to the level of B and fix a lot of ADA and accessibility issues with a new courtyard. So raised up from where the current blacktop is now. It's one of the ideas. So what happens in both of these things, each scheme, this is what's the same in both. They are complete early childhood centers with 18 classrooms and support spaces. They all have secure and age-appropriate outdoor learning and play spaces. They deal with the huge accessibility issues that we have at that site. Both of them keep the same number of parking spots that we have on the site. Neither one of them renovates Building A, and both of them rely on the kitchen in Building A to prepare any food that would be brought over to a new pre-K center. All right, here's how they differ. The main one is that north side versus the south side, right? So it's either your drop-off and your front door is on Gentry, or your drop-off and your front door is the Rose Hill Drive, right? The first option is 100% new construction, whereas the second one is part-new and part-renovation of Building B, right? And then I won't go through some of the other ones. And let's look at some costing for that. So as I have explained in the past, total project cost has, it really has three components, right? It has the estimate of cost today, the amount of inflation you think you're gonna have on top of that, and then the soft cost, which is everything else you pay outside of paying the contract, right? So the current cost in today's dollars for scene one is just under $25 million and escalated to, assuming we would start in 2023, which we wouldn't, but I had to pick some date that's going to do, that's 26 and a half million. Option two, the Rose Hill scheme, which was the more popular scheme. Fortunately, this is a case where the popular choice is the least expensive choice, so 23.3 maybe escalated up to $24 million. So we're looking at a $25 million project that we would be looking to fund at some point in the hopefully not-too-distant future, right, to do a pre-K center. And then, so what do we do in the meantime? Well, just camping out there isn't, isn't free if we do it right, right? If we're gonna do an appropriate space, we've talked about how the pre-K's been at the Jefferson Center before. There weren't, there weren't bathrooms in the classrooms there. We can make it work. But there are some things that we think we do need to do. We need to put an elevator inside that building instead of having to go out outside. We think we need to paint, and we think there's little things that we have to do, like commercial-grade stepstools at all the sinks. So someone who is this tall can reach things that are screwed into the floor and secure. And then I think a good bit of money into some outdoor play and learning areas that are child-appropriate. And then also, we need to do some envelope maintenance. A couple of years back, about a half a million was spent at Beaufort to paint and re-point the brick, fix up the exterior. That has not happened at Walker. If you go to Walker, you can see the paint peeling off, the structural steel holds still. So we need to do that. All of that is about $1.35 million. And then when we get to reconfiguration, we'll need to spend about $425,000, we estimate, in fifth-grade furniture. Now, why are we buying fifth-grade furniture? This is something that just occurred to us last week, actually, right? So we're in the process of doing these elementary school modernizations with Burley Moran just finished. We've got three more to go that have the pre-K classrooms in it. As we go through that process, we will make sure we are buying the appropriate pre-K furniture now, right? That will get moved into Walker, and then when the fifth grade moves back, we'll need to buy furniture for the fifth grade. Make sense? So that's kind of, you know, this is the temporary condition, the little bit of money involved there. And you guys want me to do the whole presentation and then get questions, or you want me to stop? Keep going, okay? So I gotta hit myself here. So let's move on to Beaufort, which is more complicated because it's more immediate, right? We've got to make some choices here. So at the CDT last, we showed the three schemes, and we kind of gave them these names. The one, option one was renovate more and build less, which is pretty obvious, right? In this case, we would keep A, B, and C and renovate and build less new square footage. Option two, gets rid of C and builds more new, and we call it the big room because it's an idea of doing a big court, a basketball court, a cross-court that's also part of the school. It would be adjacent to the dining commons and use that as a free-function space for big gatherings to have of the school and the community. And then option three, we call build in the bowl, because if you, you come up to Walker, if you come up to Beaufort, from Terry, and you've got the Smith Aquatics on your right, and you come in, before you get to the front door, there's that kind of large bowl with some nice mature trees in it between Boys and Girls Club and Smith, and there's a lot of space there, right? So we looked at an option of building there, which also helps us give a new architectural presence to the front door of the school. So this is what is common to every single option. All of them remove D. We met with the Beaufort staff and got a rousing round of applause when we said that D had to go. All of them connect all the buildings via indoor space. All of them take the admin suite, move it up to the entry level. Makes sense. All of them expand parking. All of them keep the gym down at the field level. Increase accessibility across the site, including the field level. Provide new play courts, and all of them have to relocate the garden, but we're keeping it close to the school. So here are some new images that are being seen for the first time. Again, these are, these are halfway, half-baked, so they will get a lot more rendered. But this is option one. So you can see in the foreground there, you can see Building C that has an addition on the left and an addition on the right. So the addition on the left allows us to connect it to the rest of the school. Currently, there's a ramp, a covered ramp you go down to get to the gym there. And then you can see the new construction behind it with courtyard space in between, and then the connection between B and A. So these three slides all have the, are taken from the exact same angle, so you can see the differences between these scenes. So option one, renovate more, build less, change. Option two, that's the big room. So that's a bigger, more compact footprint that builds all to the west around that big space. And then the third one is to build in the bowl. So you can see that large bowl there. In this case, we've shown handicap ramp, meandering down it to connect the full site. In this case, we would use the building to come in and navigate the site and build there. One of the things about this scheme is that it doesn't require us to build immediately to the west of the Building A, but we don't cut off all the sunlight and views to the cafeteria, right, which is one of the things I think people like a lot. So let me show you some more renderings we have. So going back to option one, where we keep C. All right, so here's another view of that. So that's kind of coming down a little bit. You're seeing the new construction in the front of C. It will connect over to A. And this is the space in between C and the new construction. So C is on the left, that wall that's rented in brick right now, that's the wall that has the big mural on. So there'd be an opportunity to keep most of that mural. We just don't have it in the, in the renderings yet. Right? Here's option two, the big room space. The big room scheme. So you can see have ways in which we could design, redesign the bowl for gatherings and accessibility, and moving down the site in different ways, and how the building might have a secondary entrance down there for a public space. You can see how we are starting to punch extra holes into Building A to get more daylight into the building. And then this built, this scheme would have a very big presence down on the field. Again, very rough renderings that will get more sophisticated. And then finally, the build in the bowl scheme gives a chance for a new entryway. So the entryway would actually be in the space between the new construction in the bowl and Building A. And we would come in and then have a series of elevators and stairs that would take you eventually all the way down to the field. So a whole new entry and a whole new presence on the, from the front. And then, as I said, this keeps, the gym is, is down at the field level, and it creates this outdoor space, amphitheater, whatever it might be, provincial garden location by not blocking off the end of Building A. All right, let's talk about what these things cost. So I've been over kind of the details. What's highlighted there in yellow is really kind of the defining things in my mind that are driving the cost in terms of what's unique about the schemes. On option one, we're at 147 square feet per student. Again, so we're below that state average of 151, pretty close, and we're building about 73,000 square feet of new construction. So here's the cost on this. So it's broken down for the renovations that we would do for A, B, and C, plus the new site work. So that totals up to $51 million, that's the amount you pay a contractor, then you have all your other costs, so $65 million. That's today's cost. If we escalate that, it would potentially go up to $70 million. Remember, we talked about this last month. The prices right now are very high. Most likely, they're gonna come down, then escalate a little bit. So that escalation should be a worst-case scenario, saying the prices are gonna stay high, and then they're gonna escalate up from there. So I think that's a good conservative range, 65 to 70, right? So we're over the 70 number. But we have some strategy for that that we want to talk about, and I'd like to get my colleague Michelle Anst to talk about two things, and then I'll show you how that could help us out budget-wise.
Everyone, so I'm gonna talk, wow. I'm gonna talk a little bit about two things that are already going on at the city that could help shift costs out of the capital budget and into, or push it into operations without really a change in overall cost. One is the solar PPA arrangements. You all are already looking at, as a city, implementing PPAs, power purchase agreements for implementing solar on various city buildings. Sometimes you can integrate roof replacements, financing roof replacements is part of that. So right now, for example, CHS has a roof replacement in the capital improvement plan, a budget of $1.32 million. That could be integrated into the PPA. So you end up taking that cost and pushing it into the rate that you pay for the power. Everybody knows what a PPA is, or do I need to explain it? Okay, so a power purchase agreement is you have a company come in and install a PB array on your building. They pay for everything, and then you basically pay them for the power on that at a fixed rate. And the great thing about that is it stabilizes And the great thing about that is it, it stabilizes the price of power over a 20 to 25 year time span. And the company that is doing it takes advantage of the tax benefits that you can't collect because you're a public entity. The way that you integrate roof replacements into that is that you just wrap that into, while they're installing the TVs, they do the roof replacement as part of that and they do the turnkey operation of that. The way that the city sees that is not as a debt, it just wrapped into the rate and the power, the, of the power that you're purchasing. Is that clear? So that's one, one mechanism of taking money out of this project by leveraging what you're doing across the district. The other way of doing it, can be used in conjunction with this, are guaranteed energy savings contracts. So the city has an RFP out right now for doing these kind of ESCO arrangements. Where a company comes in and basically helps finance replacing, say, all the lights in all the schools. And what you do is you, um, use the savings, so your operations budget stays the same, but your energy costs go down and you pay toward the loan for, um, for implementing that capital cost of, say, changing up the lighting. CMTA, our engineering partner, has an energy, an ESCO arm. So we did a quick study of like what it would take, what kind of savings were available in the district and what that could mean for this project. We looked at by implementing something like lighting retrofits in all the schools and some controls and demand response and things like that. It would be the equivalent of paying for the geothermal wells on both projects. So between 1.3 million at Buford and depending on how we phase it and stuff, between 300,000 to 1.3 at Walker, depending what strategy we take there. So there are ways of leveraging the agreements that you've got either under development or, or exploring to try and move some of the costs that are currently shown up in the capital plan, that the capital cost of the project into operations without actually increasing operations costs significantly.
Thank you, Michelle. So, um, for example, this building right here, you've got 1.32, 1.32 million dollars in the CIP to replace the roof on this building, um, starting this year, right? The, the power purchase agreement, as Michelle said, could, um, could incorporate that into the process of, of, of the TVs that you would pay for through your, your power. And so that's 1.3 million dollars that's in the CIP now that we could move over to the Buford part, alright? So let me show how some of those things, and then the, the paying for the geothermal wells, uh, is a little more obvious on how that works. So we're going to go into some more detail on that with the CDT, um, on the 14th. But I wanted to give you at least enough so you could see what we mean and we're not just pulling money out of thin air, right? So if we start with that 65 million dollars from option one, if we say, okay, let's reduce it by the money you've got to replace the, the high school roof, uh, for that process, now we're down to 63.82, right? Alright, that's also assume that we have the, the guaranteed energy savings agreement and we can take the geothermal out of that. Now we're down to 62.5, right? There's one other thing that is worth noting. The project, the total project cost is still the same, but in 2019, the city council allocated 3 million dollars to start this process. So that was, so if you consider that money that we've already done and that money we have to go find and take that out, now we're down to 59.5 million dollars, right? So we're below the 60 million dollars, using some of those strategies without having to cut anything out, right? We can go further. We can say, you know what, the renovation of building B, let's phase that, let's do that in a couple of years later. And then we can get down to 51 point, um, million dollars. So you can see that the difference, let's kind of forget delaying B. But you can see this gets a range between 59 and 64 million dollars for option one. So I think we're, we're, we're meeting the charge, right, of where we're supposed to be. So option two, uh, is the big room scheme. And it also, uh, even though it builds a lot more new construction, it also turns out to be also 147 square feet student. So, uh, still below state average. And then here's the prices on this. So six, the range of just under 67 million dollars to 71 and a half million dollars. If we take those same strategies and apply it, we're looking at a range of 61 to almost 66. And then you could do something like delaying building B and get it down to 55 to 59, if we have to go there. You can see I have an asset there that says not recommended, right? And then let's look at the last one. So this is the one that was the most popular. This one is 151, um, square feet per student. That adds up over the course of, of a building. So it's right at your state average and it's building almost 110,000 square feet new. And it has the least amount of renovation, or renovating the, the lowest compared to the other two schemes. So if we look at this, um, we're looking at a range of 68 to 73 million dollars. If we apply all the same, um, things, we can get that down to 62 to 67, 62 and a half to 67, which is where it says less 2019 allocation, right? And then at this point, you also might want to think about, you know, we, we might want to renovate at the same levels which we were doing in the other options. So I, so I showed what happens when you add those back in, right? So if you wanted to renovate A at the same level at which you're renovating in option one and two, it gets it up to 63, between 63 and 68. If you add B to that as well, it's 64 to 69, right? So we've got a bunch of options that have an ability to get as low as 50 and have, and could go up as high as 70 and averaging somewhere around 64 to 64 and a half, 65 million dollars, um, on the schemes. That's straight from the cost estimators. So this is the summary of that. So the, the first line, um, shows the estimates that we got back. And then the second line shows that alternative financing that we talked about for PPAs and, and interview saving itself, of where we could get that range down to. And what I did is I took, um, the renovation of A and B that happens in, um, in option one and added it to those numbers to get to that 64 to 69. That makes this kind of an apples to apples comparison in terms of how much are you renovating your existing buildings versus what you're building? So 60 to 69, if we can take advantage of some of these other savings that, that we've talked about. So, I'm going to ask Michelle to talk briefly a little bit more about the levels of renovation and then we will wrap up and take questions.
Great, so, um, we deliberately, deliberately in this pricing, priced a couple of different levels of renovation just so that we would have a sense of how much things cost. So in a full gut renovation, or what's termed the heavy renovation on the left, it's basically taking everything down to structure, improving the structure itself, improving the exterior envelope, including new windows and, and larger windows, new HVAC, lighting, furniture, IT finishes. You can see as you go across to the right, with each level of renovation, we start taking out things. So in the medium renovation, we're not doing nearly as much on the, um, exterior envelope size or side. We're replacing some windows, but we're not doing the full renovation of the exterior wall. We're not changing the structure. We're not, um, while we're replacing HVAC units, um, they're still in the classrooms, they're better, they're better vertical heat pumps, but they're not out of the classrooms as they are in the heavy renovation. And then new furniture and, and finishes as well. The light reno is what you see up there is a, a picture of Jackson Biya. It's like what was done at Jackson Biya, new furniture and finishes, uh, new electric lighting, a, a refresh basically, but it's not significantly touching the, the mechanical systems. Just to kind of simplify that from an indoor air quality perspective, when we look at the metrics that we've talked about before, thermal comfort, air quality, acoustic quality, electric lighting and daylighting, you can see all of the renovations do really well on electric lighting because it's basically the same strategy. But where things get a little bit trickier are, say, around acoustic quality. So a reminder that in the light renovation, we're just replacing those loud consoles in kind within those rooms. The medium renovation, we still have equipment in the rooms, but they're enclosed and a little bit more acoustically isolated. And the heavy renovation, we're taking the, the mechanical equipment out of the rooms so that, and, and their, their own sort of closet. So just so when you're thinking about the light, medium, and heavy, this is what we're talking about in terms of the qualitative difference of those experiences. And then just looking at the three schemes, Wick's, Wick did change option three so that it was more comparable in terms of the amount of light, heavy, and medium renovation. But you can see, option one has more heavy renovation, less new construction. Option two has more new construction, less heavy renovation. Option three has the most new construction, but the original budget has the lightest renovation in it. Um, in addition, the three options are different, um, geothermal well field sizes. So they have different energy use intensities and different projected annual energy costs.
So, I'll go back to, so on this one, you could also heavy, medium, and light correspond to options one, two, and three, right? It turned out that, that the renovation cost between option one and two was only separated by a couple of million dollars. You know, at this level of estimating, they were pretty close. So it's really kind of like the lightest renovation becomes the question. Do we do just that or do we take it up to the next level? Is one of, one of the questions that we'll be exploring with the CDT. And you see what that means in operating cost, 117,000 dollars to operate in the heaviest renovation, um, versus 208,000 dollars in the lightest. So that, that adds up as well over time. Okay, so I'm closing with, with schedule again. So we will have a CDT meeting on the 14th of September. We are scheduled to have a joint work session between board and council the following evening, um, to talk about these numbers. But coming out of the CDT meeting, we, the plan is to come out of that meeting with those four recommendations on the left. This is what we, we, we recommend as a, an approach, one of those three schemes or a combination of one of those three schemes for Buford that we would start in the summer of 2023. This is our recommended plan for the temporary condition at, at the pre K. Where we think we should commit to achieving reconfiguration no later than August of 2026, if we stay on this schedule and make these decisions. And then here's our recommended plan for a future new pre K center at Walker that we'll figure out. That's what we're going to come to you guys with, um, or, or vote on, right? So the, the info item and the action item are the city council, um, votes. And then I think this is a pretty easy to say yes to at this point because we'll just continue to study it up until March where we have even more accurate pricing. And then we really have to decide, are we going to do this project, fund it, or we're not, right? The, um, so this is the detail of, of the meetings. So we're at the nine, two meeting. You can see that nine, 23 is when we'll, when we will come to you. That will be our, so we'll show as much work as we can to the CDT on the 14th. We will continue to refine some of those renderings. And then we have to give everything to the clerk, the city clerk on the 24th so that they can see it as an info item on the fourth. So we're going to come the night before and show you everything we got on the 23rd and get you guys to be able to take a position on it. And then the fourth is the info item, which I think is Dr. Burley's first day. So you get the privilege of going to city council and asking for tens of millions of dollars on your first day, which I know you're going to be great at. And, um, so this is just a, a highlight of just kind of the extra, larger scale where those, those are. So we've got, we've got a month, a little month plus here to really kind of ramp up the engagement and get this in the conversation, um, and see what, uh, the community wants to do. I added this one last time because it also, this, this takes the calendar and spans it out, right? So in October, we had this kind of decision point, do we keep going, alright? We'll have city elections. We purposely did the schedule this way because we think it helps the civic dialogue for people running for office to take a position, like, yeah, I do support spending X amount of money to do reconfiguration, right? The other thing that comes up is this 1% sales tax option. So the general assembly will meet beginning of next year. There had been bills passed in the general assembly where districts have gone and gotten approval for a 1% sales tax that funds, all the money goes exclusively to school capital projects, not operating costs, but capital budgets to build things. So there's, there's hope of both delegate Hudson and Senator Deeds that they say they support this. But we need to build political support on that. Um, and then we'll have in March of next year, the, um, or it's when we'll have that decision, do we go, do we reconfigure or not? At that point, we either need to stop talking about reconfiguration, say you're not going to do it, or we're going to move ahead, right? The following month, the city council will approve its budget. And then in November of 22, if the general assembly passes the 1%, it would also have to be passed by a local referendum to go into effect, right? And then come February, March 23, we'd have our documents ready to go out to bid on marketplace for contractors. So that's kind of the larger timeframe of decision points and funding of how we have to get there, right? So I've shown this a bunch in the past. I think that if you look at the pie chart on the left, that's the percentage of spending, capital spending, the CIP, 9%. That's just to maintain what you have now, right? The current one that we're doing right, right now, on the left, which is, I'm sorry, first on the right was 9%. The current year FY22, we're doing the, um, modernization at Burley Moran. And our, our normal large, large cap maintenance is 13%. When you pop in the 50 million place quarter that we have in the middle and look at the five year plan, it jumps up to 41%. The question that we need to have as a, the discussion we need to have as a community, what is that appropriate amount? How, how, what, what's a slice of the pie that we should have every year for school facilities? It's clearly more than nine. It shouldn't, it's not going to be 41% every single year, but what is that right amount, right? And that's really an important discussion because that sales tax could generate 10 million dollars a year and could stay in place for 20 years. So there's a longer range discussion here as well. So if we only do this in real estate taxes, we need about a five cent raise in the real estate tax. We're currently 95 cents for every 100 dollar, dollars of value. About five cents we'll pay for this project, right? What the working group in the city council has been saying is that to do everything that we want to do in the city, we probably need both. We need that 1% special sales tax and we need the 5%. And the beauty of the passing the sales tax is that it can only be used for school funding. But then that takes off the pressure on the CIP for balancing this with all the other important priorities that we have in the city. From affordable housing to West Main, you name it, right? So it gives us a lot of flexibility if we can do this, but most likely, it's going to take both. So that's, that's a big, big deal, right? And, um, one of our peer engagers is here. And I'd like to have her come talk a little bit about what, um, the work they're doing. And that is the end of the presentation, we'll take questions.
Welcome, thank you for being here.
Hello, um, so I'm Shamora Cooper and I am a peer engager, um, for the reconfiguration process. So we've been working on, um, kind of just learning the process. And we have, um, come up with a plan. Myself and the other engagers have come up with a plan of how we, um, work together to, um, kind of connect the community to this process. We've talked about, um, we have put together a plan of focus areas and organizations and people that we would like to, um, connect with. So we, we've kind of started off this week. We will be working with like neighborhood associations, tennis associations, um, a lot of peer to peer one-on-one conversations. My goal is to, um, kind of work and have conversations with communities that oftentimes go unheard. And so that's my focus area. We have some of the peer engagers that will be working with the students. Um, and we, you know, we, some of us will be working together on different projects. And we, you know, we, some of us will be working together on different projects. And, you know, kind of putting ourselves out there in the community, having conversations. And, you know, that conversation is going to look different from in many different ways to where you have the conversation with different people. Some people are not familiar with the process, so it's going to look like we're introducing the process. Some people are familiar with it, but just need some questions answered. So just kind of meeting each person that we come in contact with, they are in this process, giving as much information, trying to get as many people as we can to take the survey and just kind of bridging that gap so that everybody, we can get more people to the table and everybody is a part of this process.
Sounds great. Thank you.
You're welcome.
That's what we have.
Okay, thank you so much again for that wonderful presentation. So questions from board members? Who would like to start? Somebody has to have a question.
Go ahead, Ms. Prior. Wick, thank you so much again for your presentation. As you know, every year in the CIP, the city has appropriated a million dollars for renovations at the modernizations at our schools. How would that million dollars play into your slide where you were talking about the roofing and the solar panels and things of that nature as it relates to Warfer and/or Buford?
That is a great question. So that one, that started off as a million, it's now 1.25 million. And it is in the current CIP to do the three remaining elementary schools over the next three, Greenbrier I think is next.
Yes, they are.
So if we did a guaranteed energy savings contract, we could, one of the strategies would be to go through and replace the lighting in all of the schools, all the elementary schools and this building, right? That's an energy saving strategy that you're saving, you're going to spend less money on lighting that helps fund it, right? So. So that's going to expand the scope of what we could do at the elementary schools. Right now, at Clark and Jackson Vio, we renovated four to five rooms. Burley Moran decided to do an ice dome and a library space instead. But the whole school got new furniture and new smartboards, but only those four rooms got the new lights and new ceiling. So this would be an opportunity to do more. In some ways, you could say it could maybe take some money out of that, out of that 1.25, but probably not because of the inflation issue we already talked about.
Any other questions?
I just had a quick question. Thank you for that great presentation. I had said a quick question. You mentioned toward the end that in order to complete this renovation project, it would take a 5% raise in real estate taxes and a 1% special sales tax in order to make this happen. So with the 5% raise in real estate taxes, would that be something that city council will vote on or would it be a referendum on a ballot? How would they proceed in implementing this 5% raise in real estate taxes?
So it's, it's 5 cents, not 5%.
I mean, 5 cents, yeah.
And I don't know the answer is that I think that's just a city council vote and not a referendum to raise taxes. Thing nods, but I'm not, I'm not positive on that, right? So the, the 5 cents probably could fund the whole project without the special sales tax. But if you have both, it gets a lot easier and it's a lot easier on our city councilors because they may be looking at priorities, the CIP. We run into issues with the CIP both with debt capacity and with other things that we might make some hard choices on. The 5 cents alone should be what it takes to do the schools. As you recall from the last meeting, they said if you do a $50 million project, we need a 10 cent tax increase. 4 cents of that would be for this $50 million project and 6 cents would be for everything else. All I'm coming to you with is what it would take to do the school, right? So I think they told us that 50 million project would be a, would be 4 cents of a real estate tax increase and a $75 million project would be a 6 cents, right? So I've split the difference based on where we are and said about a nickel, about 5 cents, what it should take just for the school.
I do think it is important, you know, I mean, we are speaking about the 5 cents and that is, like you said, what it would take for funding for the school project. But it is more than just the 5 cents that city council is proposing to increase. So probably 10 cents or higher. And 5 cents of that would come and fund the city part, the school's part, excuse me.
And that's as I understand to do, to do this project and everything else that's in the CIP.
Correct.
Right? Because when you throw in that, what right now is a $50 million place, so when you throw that in, we run into issues with our debt ceiling, right? We can only borrow so much compared to our revenue. So you have to increase the revenue which allows you to borrow more, grow the pot.
Dr. Kra.
Thank you very much for all of this. I feel like, you know, each time I see it and hear it, I'm learning a little bit more, absorbing a little bit more. But it's sure complicated. So my question has to do with, you know, the process of making, coming to a recommendation and the process of getting, you know, community input, which is wonderful how you're, you know, really prioritizing that. And so I guess I'm wondering, are you getting what you need? Do you feel like you're getting what you need from the community? And then at some point, do you take all of that and then sort of render your professional recommendations as to which models you think we should proceed with? Is that how this is going to work?
Well, I'll ask, I'll answer the second part of that question, but first I'm going to ask Kristin to answer the first part.
Yeah, I think we, I think we are. I'm glad to have the peer engagers on board to be expanding the scope of our conversations. And as Shamora was saying, meet everyone where they're at and help them engage as part of the process. On the 14th of the CDT meeting, we'll do a more comprehensive overview of kind of everything we've been hearing over the last six months to date and how we got to where we are now. And I, correct me, but I think our goal is to really understand what the community's recommendation is and bring that forward. And our job is to be the translators of that and how to move forward on that recommendation.
So the additional information that we collect, we will present that to the CDT on the 14th. It's like, you guys said this, here's what we've heard from everyone else in the community, all right? Now let's have a conversation about these options and what we should do. And then just as we have done in all the CDT meetings, we start off with, here's what we heard last time, right? Well, for this final one, we're going to do a, here's what we heard and we're going to put it into a recommendation. We are hearing that you guys want a new pre-K center on Rose Hill Drive and we're hearing that you want option three at Buford. We are putting that forward to you, school board, as a recommendation for the, for send the city council to consider.
Yes, all of these options are viable options from your perspective. So it's not like you would say, oh, you know, the community was saying option three, but boy, you know, we, you know, we, the professionals have a lot of concerns about that. Are we past that point?
I think, I think we are. I think all three of them can be a world-class middle school. It's just choices that we make and some of them come down to our operating costs and our climate commitment. Some do, but I think all of those, all of them could be an excellent tool. But I think we need to hear, you know, I'm really interested in hearing from the community broadly because you never know what you're going to get. People see, especially after they see the renderings and they say, I can't really see myself in a place like that or I really, I really feel like I can belong there. So I think, I'm hoping that the renderings bring out some of that. Get more of that kind of feeling of like, yeah, this, this feels like a place I want to be. So we'll see, we'll see how the conversation.
Thank you. Can I just suggest that the rendering of Buford option C, of course, is my favorite because I really want a kind of dramatic new entrance that actually we've made every significant investments. Larger children and maybe not, I don't know, because it's six feet and it just seems like kind of an elementary. I think out a little bit wider to the front entrance rather than like the courtyard piece of that. So that was my only regarding the renderings, which I know is completely superfluous, so.
We're going to have a lot more images than that. And, yeah, I know that that's your preference. I think that's the community's preference as well to do a new architectural presence. I think there's a lot of merit to that. And it could be that, you know, the recommendation most likely is not going to be a pure version of any one of those, right? You might say, you know, what we really want building C, but go cut 6,000 square feet out of it. So it's also at 147,000, 147 square feet per student like the others are and get some money out of it. Build it, do it that way. That could be a direction. But when we, when we met in Richmond, we said that, you know, based on all the information we have, I think we're heading towards this thing being between 60 and 70. And we've had it professionally estimated twice, we've drawn it up enough to have it done and here we are. We're in that, so we're at that point of where we thought we were going. Which is a matter of what we can, what we want to finance.
So I have a question, Madam Chair. So I got this from a couple of parents, this for clarification, that initially we were looking at some major renovations to Walker and Buford. Now we're just going to do some minor, more minor improvements to Walker. And the question that I have is, will we be able to roll back the fifth graders to the elementary schools and be able to accommodate the K through four-year olds? I know that all of them still won't be at elementary schools. I just wanted to make sure that, that we still have the space to do that because the improvements to Walker won't be at robust. You don't have to go into a lot of details about the classroom. That's the one to know generally if it's going to be able to work.
So based on the cost data that we just unveiled tonight, let's just say the average price at Buford is $65 million, right? Then you have 1.35 that we need to put into getting a acceptable for pre-K. And then we need to spend another about half million in furniture for the fifth grader to the sixth elementary schools. So 65 plus two. And then we are reconfigured. And then we are working towards a new standalone building, state-of-the-art early childhood center. And so that second piece is why that special sales tax is such a game changer. It allows us to have a funding source for things like that.
And speaking of the special sales tax, that's my next question. I'm not sure if you have this information, but it's my understanding that the proposal that Sally is working on is more that delegate Hudson is for more for this, for her jurisdiction, but it's also that they may be working on it, something similar for the entire state and I may delay it a year or two to kind of roll that into, you know, it well.
Yes, I'm not fully at the speed on all those politics, but my understanding is that there have been a number of jurisdictions that have had this passed with their jurisdiction. And a lot of people have seen that and said, hey, we should, we should be doing this for the whole state. And so I think Chip was, Chip Boyle, city manager, was mentioning that one of these things was, was killed in the last session because they'd rather do it privatized. So unfortunately, that's a, you know, case of the perfect being the enemy of the good.
Yeah.
But either way, I think that we need to be organizing politically to, for whoever we need to talk to. If it's a democratic chairman of a committee that's not controlled still, that has the power there. I think we need to organize and say, this is really important, we need to do this. Whether you do it for everybody or do it just for us.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
I have a question. You did a great job showing some options for funding and to support it. And then all of those options you showed and denoted not recommended to leave building B and for public and for our purposes, could you explain why that's not recommended to do and what that would mean? Is financially timing, I'm assuming?
Well, I think in your, in your, got, all of you know why, right? We've been talking about this for 13 years. This is really hard. Once you get the funding for something, it's kind of hard to go back and get more. So whenever you can do it, we always recommend do what, the most you can now. It's always going to be the cheapest to build right now, right? So I think that is, is why we would recommend not to do it and to finish the project and treat all the spaces equally, right? The other reason that I think it's concerning is that there, we would figure out a way to deal with this, but I don't want us to be sending the message that the arts don't matter, right? Because that's the arts building and we'd be saying, that's waiting, you know? You gotta wait a little bit longer till we get that. Now, why would I even propose that that be an option? Well, you can't really wait on A. You, you know, from most of the schemes, all three schemes keep A and B, right? A is a bigger chunk of money that we could say by waiting and renovating it later, but it is a lot of space. So you either don't reconfigure, meaning you don't break the sixth grade up because you need to have the extra space to move kids around as you're renovating. Or you have to get a bunch of trailers and move kids into that while you renovate A. B is a lot smaller and we can find spaces in the new building to accommodate music and band rooms. And it's a small enough of a project that a good contractor could renovate it in a summer and a fall. So it'd be a half a school year, you'd be without those spaces. And so maybe we're using the new fitness rooms as a music room instead or something. So there are options there. But we would want to know that we had the funding lined up to come back and finish it.
Any other questions, anybody? All right. Thank you. As always, thank you, your team for all of the work.
And we will see you on the 23rd.
See you soon.
All right, great. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. All right, next, we are moving to our COVID update. Dr. Baptist.
Madam Chair, members of the board, Mr. Henderson. We wanted to just talk a little bit about where we are right now with COVID and see if you had any questions. Since we have been working on all of this, we're continuing to do several things that we've talked to you about. We're still having vaccination clinics. In fact, we have one tomorrow here at the high school that will have Buford and high school students. We still have several members of our team who are on our weekly calls with our pediatricians and the health department staff. We have gotten the process started for our state testing program through the Virginia Department of Health and the DOE. We've moved on that and we're hoping to get that going sooner than we had expected. We're still working on contact tracing with the health department with any case that we have. Following data trends, you know, I kept up with it last year and a lot of the same data you were looking at, I was following. I am trying to keep up with it, looking at our daily cases, looking at the age ranges with Blue Ridge Health Department because I cannot do that just by Charlottesville. They do it by the full health district. Looking at the 14-day numbers, our local numbers, every way I can look at it, I'm trying to look at it to see what sort of trends we have so that we won't be surprised. We are working with our principals who all have, all of their list of employees who are fully vaccinated and those who have opted to do testing. So the principals will be looking at testing every week and we understand that testing is getting a little more difficult in the community. So that's one reason that we're very glad we're going to be able to do our state testing quicker because we'll be able to use that for our weekly testing for our employees. We have come out with the procedures for the paid COVID leave for our employees. We have come out with the procedures for the paid COVID leave for our employees similar to what we had last year, which ended June 30th. But we are making sure that our employees are not having to take their own personal sick leave when they're complying and following our procedures for COVID. They're getting paid for that. We have the COVID dashboard. And I know that we have high community numbers and I know you're watching those numbers every day like I am. And we have been in the high range since about the middle of August. And that's, that's not Charlottesville city schools, that's Charlottesville. And I know the last couple of days, our numbers have shown a bigger jump. And I think some of that, not all of it, but I think some of it is the increase in the numbers from the students primarily at, at UVA. Because we know many of the students who live off Brown's are counted in the Charlottesville numbers. So with all that said, I think many of our mitigation strategies are working because if you look at the, the numbers that we have, and I know the slide's pretty busy, but if you look at the numbers that we have had within Charlottesville city schools since the week of opening of schools, blue bean for students and orange bean for, and I promise I did not pick blue and orange for UVA. The, the computer picked that. I would have done it had I thought about it, but I didn't. So you can see that we have had very low numbers. I think it's coming. You can see that we've had very low numbers within our schools. The highest that we've had on any day was for student cases. And when we look at the cases, I've also tried to keep up with which of the cases were the people involved not in our buildings. You know, they contacted us and said, I've got COVID, so I'm not starting school until I've finished with my time or I'm an employee. I'm not starting. So this does include either staff or students who have not yet been in the building for various reasons. So you can see on a daily basis, we've had very low numbers. If you look at our dashboard, we've had a total of 20 students and we've had a total of 12 staff. And of those 12 staff, 11 were vaccinated. All of our staff who have been ill haven't felt great, but they have not had to be hospitalized. For the students, I think one had to go to the emergency room briefly, but none of the students have had to be hospitalized. So yes, we've had 20 students and 12 staff that have been sick, but fortunately, none of them has been seriously ill or had to be hospitalized. You know, that's 12 students and 12 staff more than I would like to see. But when you look at the numbers around us, I think what's going on in Charlottesville city schools has been very well handled. And we are continuing to look at all the mitigation strategies and continuing to do what we can for our students. And that's kind of where we are. So I would ask if you've got any questions about any of this and just know that we're going to continue following all of the things that we have been doing to this point and hope that the surge will soon end. I'm sort of hoping that maybe in the schools, we're close to the end of the surge. We only had one, one yesterday and one today. So I like to think we're getting past, we might not, but we're hopeful. So I would ask if you've got any questions.
I'm sure we have some, thank you.
Oh, really?
Would you like to start?
Thank you, Dr. Baptist. Just have a few questions. The state testing that you were mentioning for employees, is that just for the, I'm sorry, the state testing? Can you just elaborate on it? Is it, can, if a student is feeling ill, will that work for them as well?
This is a program offered by the Virginia Department of Health and the Virginia Department of Education. Where we can sort of set the parameters for what testing we want. It can be random testing and we can pick who we want to be in the random, or it can be random, or we can pick who we want to be tested. Some divisions might be doing their athletes, some might be doing a group of their faculty. So if we've got staff who need that weekly testing, we can do that for them. And then we will determine how we want to do the remainder of the testing. Virginia Department of Health and DOE, they have, I filled out the form recently that we tell them what we need for this. And I have told them we need two staff members wanting to help coordinate it. One to assist in the vendor that is selected. So they will actually pay the cost of the program. We won't be paying for the program at all. We just will be coordinating with them to make sure it happens. So it will be staff and students who will go through the testing. And we can decide which ones go through it, if we repeat them weekly or if there's some that we do monthly or however. So we're working on those details, but it can be staff or students.
Okay, thank you. And then when we're talking about the dashboard, is there, it's on the dashboard. I guess what I'm trying to ask is that the numbers on the dashboard are only those where they're, they've been reported to us.
Correct.
So if they haven't reported it to us, then it won't show up on our dashboard. So is there a balance between the Blue Ridge Health District and what we're reporting to get an accurate number? Because it, it didn't dawn on me that it's self-reported and not if we, if there's a case that automatically is added to our dashboard.
If Blue Ridge Health Department gets a case that is connected with Charlottesville city schools, like a student or a staff member, they will contact me and we will then have it as a case on our dashboard. So it has to be one that either the health department knows about and tells me about, or if I know about it, I will tell the health department about it. I report every day the cases that I have heard about and then they respond and then they tell me about cases that they know about. So our dashboard and numbers that Blue Ridge would have, they'd be the same. Although Blue Ridge is, is looking at the total population where our dashboard is only our CCS family.
Okay. And then one more question. Is there a way to update the dashboard so that we can see students that might be quarantining? Cause to get an idea of the, the types of disruption to education? So if it's one student that was reported yesterday, how many were deemed close contacts? Is there a way to document how many students are currently quarantining?
I keep up with that. We haven't put it on the dashboard because our dashboard had been set for cases. I can tell you, there have been 58 different people who have had to quarantine for some period of time. I do keep up with that every day. We just have not been putting the exposure, I should say 58 exposures. We just haven't been putting that on the dashboard because each time someone has to quarantine, it could be a different amount of time. If they're not vaccinated, it's 14 days. If they are vaccinated, they don't have to quarantine, but you have to get testing in. So each case really you have to, it's almost like a flow chart with every case. What has to happen with this case? What has to happen? So I think if we even put quarantines on there, it, it wouldn't be a apples to apples declaration of what's happening with each person.
Okay, I was just interested in the, it would be nice to see it all, but the student quarantine in particular, I was wondering about. Thank you.
I'm keeping up with it. So I can give you broad numbers as we go. We just haven't been putting it on the dashboard.
Thank you.
We can go down the line if you'd like. No questions, Mr. Bryant, Ms. Preer?
Hi, Dr. Baptist, how are you?
Fine, thank you, and you?
I'm great. Tell us what you know about the division offering the booster? Because you were able to coordinate everything for us to do our first and second vaccination.
I know that the vast majority of our folks took their second shot the end of February. And if I'm correct, we would be eligible by the end of October. And so I have already put the bug in some of the Blue Ridge folks here that we want to do that again. And I didn't think about it till you just asked that question. Someone from the health department reached out to me yesterday. We were already talking about when the vaccine becomes available for ages five through 11, trying to set up clinics within the school for that. But as soon as we can get the, that booster, I'll be setting it up because I would like mine too.
Dr. Baptist, I just want the community to understand that your job is also interim HR director and COVID coordinator at this point for our division. So I just really want to appreciate your efforts here and would like to acknowledge that how difficult this task has become. Like at this point, we were not expecting to continue to have to have these very rigorous conversations around COVID. So I do appreciate your energy and ongoing because I really do feel like your continuity benefits our division. So thank you for staying on, on that regard and for everything that you've taken on and in, in the past 18 months.
Thank you.
That doesn't mean I don't have any questions. As you know, I thought the, so every day I get a call, every day. Like I have three kids in three different schools, so I get a call every day. And that is incredibly challenging. So while your numbers are incredible, very heartening, it's also very nerve wracking for parents. I just want to acknowledge that to the parents too. I would love to see a much more rigorous testing model begin ASAP at our schools. Now, it's just funny to me because we're education, we're not, we're not health people. You know, like we, we're supposed to give, give education. And so it's frustrating to me that I, I see that we need to also be, we're also community centers. Like we're just really where the community gathers. So I would love, and to the, you know, I think we received some information from Ms. Suttle about like testing models like in San Diego and things like that. And I just, I do think that our community would benefit very significantly if whatever we create, we have at every school in some way. I just think some of the very compelling stories I've heard about our, you know, like I think we got an email today about how, you know, only one of the testing sites is walkable for some of our community families. So if we could have them at our schools, testing for all children, whatever we create, I would love to have as broad as possible. I think there's very strong federal dollars available to, to do that. And I really know that, you know, to the extent that we can do this, this is what I really hope that we are doing.
The information about the testing program that we're trying to be a part of will go out to families either Monday night. I know Monday's a holiday. It will either go out Monday night or Tuesday to start getting the consents because we have to get consents from everybody and there's some things that have to happen. But the testing program, I was in touch with them yesterday and said, we're ready to go. We want to go now. And so he promised me that we were going to do that and to go ahead and, and start sending the information out. So Mr. Henderson, Beth Chuck and I, and I think him may have been in the room then to talk about it. And so Beth Chuck is working on the letters to have a model of them for Charlottesville.
Yeah.
And then they'll go out either Monday night or Tuesday.
Perfect, love to hear it. Thank you so much. I know that will really help our parents to feel, every day I wonder like, should I, like, should I have chosen virtual? Like every day. So I just want to, and I'm a school board member, you know, and I know the mitigation that we put in place. I know that my kids are wearing masks. I know that their staff, the staff is doing everything, everything they can. So it's just very frightening.
And I know parents are frustrated with it and
Frightened.
I know. And, and I'm sure there are some parents that say, whatever the school says is going on with my child is not serious. That one time we don't take it seriously could be the time that we have a serious case. So I, you know, we're working with our nurses to really look at the symptoms that students are exhibiting and use their best nursing sense to decide what needs to happen. And even the pediatricians are asking us, don't let things go that you think might not be a symptom. Let us check them out. And so we have told our families too, that if they really need to get to a doctor, if they don't have the transportation to get there, we'll work with social workers or somebody to help get them to provide the transportation to get them to the doctor so they can determine if testing is needed. So we're, that's one more thing that we're trying to do.
Well, I appreciate it. And I just don't understand how we are expected to do this as a school division, like when we, they're just such a limited capacity. And we're already stretched so thin.
We've got fantastic teachers and administrators. They, I know some of them are here tonight and I truly appreciate all that they're doing because this is one of their jobs too. And so everybody's working on this together. It truly is a team effort.
Do appreciate that, so thank you. I wanted to mention also, we did get that email from Dr. Lawn about the vaccinations for athletes, which I thought was super helpful to kind of bring up. Athletes being a very unique environment. And so to the, I don't know, we haven't talked about this, what mandate about 12 plus? Getting, you know, what, I don't, you know, I want parents to get their kids vaccinated. I really want our athletes to be vaccinated because like that's the only way my child was exposed at the university was through his extracurricular activities. Like you can't do all this mitigation except for that you're outdoors.
We have it in the works right now to require our athletes to be vaccinated. We, this afternoon, set up a clinic on September the 13th that we hope we could get the mobile bus to come to us, but it's booked for that afternoon. So I've already gotten a commitment from Mr. Redd that we will take our athletes to the J Crew site that day. Any of them that are not, 80% of the CHS athletes are already vaccinated. So we're going to work to get the other 20% vaccinated.
Well, that's a really helpful number. I appreciate you telling us that. That does help, I think, to understand the kind of limited numbers we're talking about, which is great. And that maybe that would help us understand if I understood more about how many of our students are vaccinated, how much of our staff is vaccinated. Like I know, I'm not trying to
I can't, I can't tell you the number of students. We don't have access to that information. Number of staff vaccinated, we've been saying approximately 95% and I still believe it's about that number. I can't tell you it's exactly 95, but from all of the information that we have and what I've shared with principals when they were to let me know if any people had not completed our form, it's still staying at right at 95%. And out of the ones who are not, and by saying vaccinated, I mean two shots over two weeks.
Thank you, that's helpful.
But we have had a number of people who were, have had one shot. The requiring of vaccinations versus weekly testing have convinced some people that maybe doing the vaccinations is a better way to go. And so we've got a few that have one shot already, will get the second. And then we have, I don't, I don't want to give you a number because I
That's fine, that's fine.
That are going to submit to weekly testing.
Well, thank you. And I, I think what would be helpful with Coach Redd also would be to talk to the winter athletes and coaches.
We're going to get them in so they'll be ready for that. So this
Because those are all indoor.
This September 13th is not just for fall.
Okay.
It's for any of the, well, all athletes will need to be vaccinated. So let's go ahead and get the winter athletes vaccinated now so they'll have the immunity by then.
Well, again, I, I, just looking at all of the things that you have done in the past month since our last board meeting and I, I don't understand how you can do it and I appreciate so much what you're doing.
I'm one of many.
I know you are, but you are also in front of us taking the heat every month.
Thank you, Mrs. Preer, appreciate that.
Thank you. So I just had a quick question. Jennifer asked one of my questions about the athletes, but my other question is going to be kind of, um, just, you know, you're down in the nuts and bolts of this. Is there anything that concerns you at all, Dr. Baptist? About the numbers, the trends, the potential testing, the vaccines? Anything that kind of, you know, keeps you up at night or might keep you from watching the UVA games?
Nothing's going to stop that. What bothers me? Well, it concerns me that there's so much concern. And when people call me worried about something, I can say, I think your child is as safe with us as anywhere else, but I can't promise that. So I think what, knowing that we've got the mitigation in place, you know, I can only, you know, try to help, help people understand it. When I see the numbers in Charlottesville proper go up, yes, it concerns me. But I'm not seeing them go up within Charlottesville city schools. So that, that sort of helps. So, I mean, I'm, I'm worried about Delta overall, but I think I'm, I'm doing as much for myself and for those around me to protect me and others. But I can certainly understand, if I had small children, I would really be even more worried. And I'm going to be a grandmother next month. And so I'm really worried about, you know, that part of it and that they might not let me see my grandchild for a while.
Thank you.
Well, just a quick comment and then a quick question. Comment is, you know, I really, I'm so glad we're going to be hopefully getting that state testing program going because I think it is getting incredibly difficult in community to get tested. And I will say just for myself, because I've been trying to get tested because I've traveled internationally and it's really hard. So I went today to the Penniesite. There was a two hour wait. I would have missed this meeting, so I had to leave. And, you know, the best I can get is something in Waynesboro on Sunday. So I worry about, you know, the staff who saying they're going to get tested every week. It's really hard to do it, much harder than even two weeks ago.
Absolutely. Absolutely. Because two weeks ago, the health department said anybody can get tested anytime, anywhere. And it's changed.
No, it's, it's really different. I was just shocked to see what I saw today. So I'm, you know, eager to get this program, something that we can control. And then my only question was that, wondering if the cases that we've had, the small number, are they spread across basically all of our schools? Or are they concentrated more in one or two schools?
I'm not looking at the dashboard right now. They are spread somewhat across the schools. I think the last week or so, for some reason, we've had more at Walker. But for the most part, I know we've had some at the various elementary schools. We've had a couple at Duke, we haven't had many at the high school. So I would say they're spread across, but this past week it seems more like Walker. But when you look on our dashboard, on, on one page, they see that page, don't they? That lists the schools. Yeah, each, each case is listed as whether it's a student or an employee in what school.
In what's, okay.
Yeah, I think Leslie's trying to pull it up.
And I, you know, also thank you for being on top of this and being so proactive and really, you know, doing everything we can do to prevent this from being a real mess. So thank you.
Well, thank you all for your, your kind words. It's something we need to, to work on.
Now I want to get my booster too.
So it's under, I think, the access, the code protocols. There. That's the last year's. Here it is. See, we do it by the week ending, whatever that Friday is. And so then we have the site and whether it was a staff or student for the 20 students. And this yellow shading has confused some people. I did that to help myself because those were cases that the students never entered school until their time of isolation was over. So those cases were not, not in our buildings. They were prior to coming into our building.
Ask you one quick question about the numbers real quick. When you were saying this week they were down, are any of the cases this week connected to exposures from last week?
Um, I think I know of one case that is, but it's not a majority of them.
Any other questions? I would like to take, we're going to get to this a little bit later here on the agenda, but we do have our student rep who's joined us and just, we do have three different student reps that join us throughout the year on the school board. So I'd like to take this moment right now to introduce everybody to Leila Sheikh and would like to give you the opportunity. Well, first off, thank you for doing this. It's wonderful. But I would like to give you the opportunity to ask any questions or make comments about this.
Okay, um, I'm actually also pretty concerned about the Delta variant too. So you said that, you know, that how many teachers are vaccinated, like the staff? But how do you ensure the safety of the students that are coming into the building? Um, are you able to track down who's vaccinated and who's not?
For students?
Yeah, like the ones that are actually coming to the building, not the ones like reporting that they have.
We, we can ask our, our staff members about their vaccinations. We cannot ask students. If students want to tell us if they've been vaccinated, then we would have that information. If we have visitors who are coming into the building, our policy has been you're not to come into the building unless you're fully vaccinated. So I don't know that in all cases, people are checking that vaccination card, but we do expect our visitors to be vaccinated to come in the building.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
Yes, Mr. Henderson.
Madam Chair, members of the board. I, I just want to make sure that the community is aware that we are not going to be complacent with this. We continually assess where we are daily. We meet with the principals weekly and we can get their feedback on things that they see that we could do better in terms of mitigating the virus. Couple of things have come up recently is lunch. And so we are trying to figure out a number of ways where our kids can eat safely, mainly outdoors. So we've added, we're purchasing quite a bit of picnic tables to increase outdoor seating. And we're looking at spacing and we're looking at the amount of time that kids have for lunch. We know that it's a great social opportunity, but we know that once you get over that 15 minute mark, the chances of spread increases. So we're looking at ways to minimize lunch, but then again, follow it with recess. It's a longer period of time. We're also looking at not only the fall, we know winter is coming up and we've got to have a plan for that in terms of indoor feeding as well as more indoor. Our goal, our past protocol was if it's not under extreme cold, we go outside. If it's not under extreme heat, we go outside. And so that's kind of our standard right now. But I just want to ensure the community that we are consistently looking at this and adjusting how we mitigate this virus. And want to thank Beth and, and Kim and Dr. Dr. O for their work as well as the principals because they're right there and they're, and the feedback that they provide us helps us do our job as well.
And I especially want to thank the nurses in our schools. They have done the government's job to, to work with all of this, along with all the other tasks they have as nurses.
Thank you. Any other questions, anybody, comments? Thank you, as everyone has said, for all of the work associated with us. I do realize it's a lot of time. I'm anxious and excited about the, the testing program that we have in the works. I think that is huge. So thank you for pursuing that and persevering with that. Also was curious, I know that we have, and I can't remember the name of it. We have the mobile, Moby, is it Moby vaccination van? And I'm wondering if somebody from Blue Ridge Health District is listening right now. Maybe they would consider a mobile testing van that could go around to schools and/or communities, you know? And I don't know. I mean, I think everybody, we receive a ton of emails with a lot of great ideas. And that's what this is all about, is community pitching ideas and working together. And we've seen a lot of that around COVID and we will hear and see more around transportation, a lot of things. So, but you know, I think we as a board and a division are always open to, to hearing these ideas. I think the outdoor time and spaces is crucial. I think there are a lot of schools in the area who, you know, prepare their students for, you know, even chillier temperatures, you know, and still get that, that outdoor time. And we really have had milder winters the last few years. So I hope and I support and, you know, again, any community members who can, can assist with ideas or if you have contacts for large outdoor tents or anything like that. I think most, if not all of the schools that, that I've heard and principals that I've spoken with are very open to getting the kids outside. So all of that is much appreciated. And I just want to extend mine and on behalf of the board gratitude to everybody for all of the work. I mean, we know that this is so, so much on top of, you know, reestablishing those relationships with our students as they come back. And again, that is, that is utmost. I mean, it's just been so wonderful to see the kids walking to school, getting on buses, getting in and out of the car lanes and excited to be there. And so we know everybody is working on all kinds of levels of just doing that and let alone adding on, you know, all the COVID checks or having to monitor and screen that and just the energy that goes along with that. So I do want to acknowledge that on all levels with everybody, every single day because we all are shouldering it. And I think to the point that has been made before and we have had, and I hope we do get to do again, a COVID update on a weekend. That was what was broadcast and it's, I believe on our website, that is kind of a Q and A about COVID. And, and so to ask these questions or to come to us, even if we've provided the information or even if it's on the website, it's okay, ask your question. Everybody is showing up and feeling the angst or tuning in and engaged to something at, at different levels. And so we, we need to address that and we will address it. And we will continue to be supportive of each other through the process as we're all tuning in to different levels of what's going on with COVID. So thank you again heartfelt. One last comment and it's just, I would love to sit and work a little bit more, ask if, if there's different tweaks that we could do to the dashboard, you know, as people roll off of that and are no longer potentially out. If we can shade them a different color or just, you know, I mean, as those numbers, I don't know if we can, but we can look at that later. But if there's no further questions around that, we'll move on and thank you for that update.
Welcome.
I'm next.
And guess what? We have Dr. Baptist to present and talk to us a little bit about our update on growth measures.
Yes, Madam Chair, members of the board, Mr. Henderson. I was asked to share some information about this new assessment. When it first came out, they called it the through assessment. I'm still not sure why it was called the through assessment, but then they started talking about it. It's the growth of the through assessment. So I refer to it more as the growth assessment. I'm not going to look at that. Next slide. There you go. So this assessment is only for students in grades three through eight and only when reading in math. It is an online computer adaptive test, which means how you answer one question determines what your next questions will be. So it does it based on how you answer a certain question. There are paper tests available. For the reading, you can see the number of items for math and the number of items. And this is looking more at what students would have had in the previous grade. So third graders, it's looking at a few third grade standards of learning, but primarily second grade standards of learning. So it's really trying to get a baseline for where the students are at the beginning of that, that year. So that's what they're, they're looking at there. There's no pass or fail to this test. You know, in the SOL test, we've got the magic 400 for a passing score. And this, it's going to be, and I think it's on the next slide too, it's going to be on a vertical scale. So no child passes or fails this test. And so what, why is DOE mandating this test? You can see in the first bullet, to really look at the previous grade and help us to know about unfinished learning and where students are at the beginning of their current grade. This will also, when we think about it, is growth assessments. It's going to help us measure the growth from right now to when we do the spring testing. We could have done this test anytime between August of 23rd and October the 15th. We elected to do it this week, the week after kids came back so that we would have the very beginning so that we'll be able to show the true growth from the beginning of the school year to SOL time. For most of the kids in grades three through eight, they're finished with this assessment because they did it yesterday and today. I think some kids at one school may be doing it tomorrow because there was a time front. But for most of our students, they have finished this test. The scores are coming in now and I, I see the scores, but they have not shared with the division directors of testing how to understand the scores. Ask me next Friday, I'll be able to tell you how to understand the scores. So I have that, that training next Friday, but it is on a vertical scale. And we will look at that from this test. And I'm assuming that the SOL will also, I'll have a vertical scale attached it now. So we really will be able to see growth, not just two discrete numbers. No pass or fail. And in, and this year we're doing it in the fall and we're doing it, the SOL in the spring. For 22, 23, it will be this fall growth assessment plus one in the winter and then SOL in the spring. So it'll be three times that we'll be measuring the growth. But this is something new for us this year. And as I said, it, to me, it was a pretty painless process because it was a shortened version, 17 to 19 items on one test, 20 to 25 on the other, online. And it was done yesterday and today. So we're, we're waiting to see what will happen. We will be sharing information by question with teachers. And there will be a parent portal that we will be able to share with parents so they can go in and see how their children have done on this particular assessment. But we won't be opening that up until we have the understanding of the actual score so that we can help parents understand it. So that's where we are on growth assessments.
So we're only doing the growth of measure once this year?
From fall to spring.
Okay. So the SOL somehow, because you said we're doing it in the fall and we're doing the SOL in the spring.
So I'm thinking they will also now have on the SOL test, some sort of vertical scale so that we will be able to equate it. Because just having a, a number now, like these numbers are all four digit numbers where SOL scores are, you know. Yeah. So I'm hoping they're going to equate those standard scores that we've had for SOL also into a vertical scale so that we can see a growth. Because if not, we're going to have apples and oranges. We're going to need to have some sort of scale for the SOL to show the growth. And it's, the numbers they've told us would go between 1,000 and 8,000 on the scale. So we need the understanding of exactly, if I have a fourth grader who has a 1,400 at this point, I don't know what that means, but we'll have the training for that this week. And then hopefully in the spring, the child will be at 1,800. And then we'll be able to show the growth between the two and what that difference means. So more to come on this, but we have done the assessment. So that's behind us.
You, thank you for bringing this. I had asked Mr. Henderson and Dr. Baptist to present this briefly to us, knowing that we will find more out and learn more about it, but also wanted the, the public to understand that these were new assessments, that the DOE is mandated that we do. My question also was, how does this overlay other assessments that we're doing throughout? Are we getting rid of other assessments? So it's not something more that we're asking of the teachers and just in the big picture and how does that look?
The one assessment that at first we thought it might replace would be math, but we are not replacing, are not reducing math now. But one of the reasons is with our gifted identification, we have to have a nationally normed reference test. And this Virginia growth assessment is not that. So we will still have the map in place for other reasons too. But one reason is for the gifted identification that we're required to have a national test for. So we're not getting rid of, of math. Now, some teachers, once they understand these scores, may not feel the need to do some of the benchmark at the beginning of the year that they've been doing, but we don't have any set assessments that we are deleting because of this.
So is there work from you all to kind of look at those types of other benchmark assessments that teachers have typically used so that, again, it doesn't feel like it's more or that it isn't more?
We are looking at that. And when we prepared the assessment calendar for this year, we really focused on the assessments that were absolutely needed and what was the purpose of each assessment and talked with principals and teachers about not doing assessments just for assessment sake, to use that time for more instruction. So we're trying to make sure that we're doing an assessment that's needed to lead instruction, but not just to do additional assessments. So we're trying to cut back on the assess, some of the assessments that we had on the assessment calendar to the main ones that are required.
You, I just wanted to mention one more thing is I, I feel very strongly that given the whole last 18 months, that it's really helpful that we're doing a growth measure rather than the one point in time SOL measure. And that seems to me a great way to kind of be more positive and like instead of negative. And I just really want to emphasize that I believe this board really is, would rather see what the growth is for our students over the next nine months than any score on the SOL test at the end of this year. I just, that is, in my opinion, for me personally, the most important thing because there's so much we can't get back. And we're going to do the best we can and we need to meet each student where they are. And we cannot, whatever the expectation is for the SOL at the end of the year, I have no idea what it is. But I'd love to, for our students and our teachers to really focus on growth for our students.
That's, that's what we all believe would be more important than just a test and time.
Mr. Bryant.
Yeah, Beth, I just had a quick question. Once the growth assessments have been determined and the training has. Once the growth assessments have been determined and the training has been done and the portal is open for parents, will they be training for the parents to interpret, I mean, even though it's a pass?
No, I don't know exactly what it will look like, but we will definitely have information for parents to help them understand what the scores mean.
Okay. Will that be done through the teachers or?
We really haven't talked about how we will do that. I don't know whether we'll do, the, the state may give us some templates to look at, but then we will look. If that doesn't work for us, we will create one that we feel like will be explanatory to parents. So we'll make sure we, we do the, the best we can to help parents understand what those numbers mean.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions? Michelle?
I have one quick question. It's kind of a follow-up, just to clarify. For the three through eighth grade group, how many assessments or tests do they usually take in a year?
Well, I mean, they, they haven't been doing this growth assessment before. They've done the math assessment and reading and math. And then they would do the SOLs and reading and math in the spring. The others would be more teacher tech. Jim, you may be able to help with that.
What we've done this year is to focus on what's required by the state and what we feel that is best practices in helping us change instruction in the classroom. So what we do at third grade is PALS.
Oh, yes.
Which is not state mandated, but it's something that gives us a good, it's a, right now it's in flux because it's being revised. But at least once over a couple of years, that's the screening, that's what's happening right now with PALS to revise the PALS assessment. It's actually three years, but on the third year, we will now, we will begin to look at those scores and they'll be more accurate. But right now it's PALS, pre-K through third grade, the growth measure and math. We've asked our classroom teachers to integrate their progress monitoring within their normal instructional day. And we're only focusing on those assessments. And one last assessment is that we are requiring our fourth grade students to take a science assessment because we have to make sure that what we know, what our students know when they enter Walker School because it's a transition year. And right now we have some gaps in science at fifth grade. So we're going to use that measure to begin to plan instruction, help us plan instruction for elementary, but also for fifth grade.
I think it's also a social emotional survey or?
Well, there, there is a VKRP that, that the state.
That's kindergarten.
Asked us to do at kindergarten and then they're looking at, there's a social emotional that we did away with one that the CCS used and we're only using the VKRP, social emotional piece of that as well. And right now we do not use, and then we use their math and part of the VKRP as well.
Any other questions?
Thank you.
Thank you, Beth. Thank you, Dr. Baptist. Next, we have our transportation update. Kim, how?
Good evening again, Madam Chair, Members of the Board and Mr. Henderson. So with us this evening, we're fortunate to have Garland Williams, the Director of Charlottesville City Transit. And he will be providing an update regarding the driver situation and routes and students and so forth. So I'll turn it over to him. Thank you for being with us.
Welcome, Mr. Williams.
Thank you, Madam Chair, Members of the School Board. Once again, my name is Garland Williams, Director of Transit for City of Charlottesville over CAT, which includes transit and pupil. So today I want to basically update you on where we are with the start. The start of school year, we were able to transport 1,021 students. That was with 12 drivers and allowed us to go 13 elementary school routes with doubles at Clark and Johnson, nine middle school routes, eight high school routes. It was seven alternative, but it had, those are changed and now it's eight. Where we are working through some changes at transit to allow some additional drivers to come over to help with pupil. On the 14th, I mean, on the 13th of, of September, we will have three additional routes added. That is 46 students per bus with two kids per seat. We're estimating we'll be able to do one elementary school, one middle, one high school, which is 138 per tier. With three additional routes, we'll be able to add 414 additional students. We are still recruiting as hard as we possibly can. Since our last, since my last update was in written to you, we have hired six new drivers. And we have nine new applications of which they are in various levels of recruitment. We are reaching out to them, setting up interviews and working through that model as fast as we can. We're also working that the six that are hired, there will be a start of a training class also on the 13th of September. Usually it takes about three to four weeks to hire, too much to hire, but we're trying to compress that into three to four weeks and get them through the training program before they're able to actually get behind the wheel and operate with students and, and transport kids. Our goal is to get to 35 full-time regular drivers. At this point, we are about 20 down. With the six, it'll be 14. We're pulling over four, five from transit to help out in the interim. We have 17 drivers that have the S endorsement at CAT. We do not count two of them in the model because they do not work a steady schedule and therefore we can't count them in our model. We have reached out to every one of them. Many of them have had issues with their own personal families that they, some of them drove last year and they don't want to drive now, but we have been trying to incentivize them to do so. We have also made it an effort to go back and talk with every one of our existing transit drivers and try to convince them to pursue the S endorsement. We have two that are in the pipeline and will start in the class on the 13th. And I think I'll open it up for questions at this point.
Thank you. Dr. Craft, do you have a question?
Well, I'm wondering, I'm not sure which one of you has, would have the answer to this, but just since, since school has started, how many of our kids and families have not been able to get to school?
So that's the number one question that keeps me up at night and I don't have a great feel for it. I do know there's a fair number, basically our waitlist, I thought this was in the list of questions, but hang on. Sorry. Mask, I mean, your phone don't, your phone doesn't come up as fast as it normally does. So based on Power School with the data that was pulled into Versatrans to do this next round of routes, at that time, we had 1,286 students on the waitlist. Keep in mind that pre-pandemic, we were transporting a little over 2,000, somewhere between 20, around 2,200 students. That was our norm and that, that was on some pretty crowded buses because the, the driver shortage is not new. So essentially with transporting 1,400, 1,045 students, as I think you said, 1,041, we're, we're real, we're close there. So, and then with 1,286 on the waitlist, basically our post-pandemic or, or situ, our demand for buses now is essentially the same as it was before the pandemic. But we have, you know, the driver crisis has gotten worse and we are really strictly, more strictly limited to two students per seat where we would often do three and so forth on a seat before. So that's made it more challenging. I think one of the key things that you need to know is that with the number of routes that are coming online on September 13th, and I, I confirm this with Sherri Eubanks, just, you know, as we were waiting for this agenda item to come up. I think we're still going to have about 800 to 900 students on the waitlist after the 13th. And transit is working extremely hard to bring more drivers online. I know it's poor solace, but we're, we're not alone in this situation. If you've been following the headlines elsewhere.
Yeah, I know.
So those are the best number. I think for me, the most relevant number that I've got is like, there's still 800 to 900 kids. I think that we're going to be looking to get transportation for. But we have been working with the principals to identify in this next round, who absolutely has not been able to get to school without the bus. And certainly those students have been prioritized. And I have to say, there are a lot of people in the school division who are doing everything they can, using personal vehicles and so forth to just help everyone that we can all the time. Some of you, Lisa Torres has been doing the same herself. It's a big challenge.
I know. Those are people on the waitlist currently because like I, I drive my kids to school, but I would, I, I didn't put my name on a waitlist because I would prefer them to drive the bus, but at the same time I don't, I actually recognize the issue here.
So before the 13th, so coming off of like, as of August 25th, you might say, up to this past weekend when the data was pulled, it was 1,286 students assigned to waitlist. And with this next set of routes coming out and the adjustments made, because one of the things that happens and it's unfortunate routing, I have to tell you, Garland can speak more to this, but I mean, right now what they're trying to do to, to pull in all this data and reroute everyone to be as efficient as we poss, as they possibly can. It's a Herculean effort to do it in this compressed timeframe. It's a ton of data that has to be combed through and, and it's really arduous. And our, our students don't sit still. They leave the district, they move within the community and that adds to the challenges. So that's, that's what we're, that's what we're working with. Would you like to add anything else to that?
I would just say that I've been in transportation business a long time. And the systems that are used right now, it is so sensitive that if you change the address, it potentially kicks the kid out. So we may potentially in the routing lose a kid and we're trying to figure and we have to go back in. And then they put out another kid because we're trying to put them in where they're supposed to be. So the team that we have, they're combing through it every single day. I think we just, the preview routes just went out to the, the principals, I believe to, to today. So they'll have an opportunity to take a look. And like I said, it's 400 and about 14 kids that will be added, which brings the number down to about 800 and so. And we'll continue to work that model until we possibly can and bring more drivers on as fast as we possibly can. Our, our marketing efforts are not just localized to the city of Charlottesville. We've actually expanded to Richmond and then the Richmond radio market and Harrisonburg radio markets. So we're allowing us to get a bigger net. We've also spent a lot of effort in the last couple of weeks getting on Facebook. The Facebook advertising stuff has been extremely successful. We've had a lot of inquiries. Unfortunately, they ask and they haven't come in, but they've been asking about the, the potential and they see the, the benefit of, you know, having the bonus. That's been a, a really helpful tool at this point in time also.
Mr. Wade, do you have any questions? No? Anybody?
I have a quick question for the marketing and advertising for the jobs, just to clarify. Because I was trying to pitch the bus driver job to someone.
Thank you.
To be clear, they don't have to have the driver certification when they come in the door. You all will help them.
That's correct. We will teach them.
That's, just to confirm.
So as soon as they get, so when you get, the, the bonus is designed, so once you get through training, you will get your first assessment. So we divided it up into three payments. So it's $800 a payment. So once you get in, we teach you how to drive, you pass your test, you get your first payment. Then you'll get, in the scale, we have it basically scaled out. So it's a September payment, a December payment and then a June payment.
Thank you. And then this message is, or question is for Kim. Of the students who are on the waitlist, are they still making it to school? Or have they switched to virtual? What's going on with those students?
That, yeah, that was similar to Dr. Craft's question. And I don't have a great quick answer for that. I, I think some of the attendance has been what I would call, you know, spotty. They're not able to make it to school as consistently. But that's something that I hope after we make this next, you know, we get this next round of routes in place, we can do a better assessment of that to understand where, where the, you know, where the issues still are where students are just absolutely not able to get to school. And we'll try to find more creative solutions to help with that. We've looked at some programs like a reimbursement program for families that we were trying to offer, but that doesn't seem to be taking off. So we'll look at some other options as best we can. Again, a lot of times staff is pulling together and trying to just help with, with students who are not coming, you're not able to get to school and we know it's a transportation issue. But one of the things, and Garland mentioned this, one of the things we're doing with this next round of routes because we know how precious each seat is, is that each principal, as hard as it is for his team to do this routing as quickly as it has to be done for the 13th, as they're getting narrowing in on what they think, like this is the list of students we're routing based on what came across in Power School, they're sending it back to the principals for a kind of a quick last look so that principals have that opportunity to go through and make sure that those seats are being assigned to the students that at this time we consider to be the ones in most, in greatest need based on the information that really only a school leadership can have because they know the family situations the best, certainly better than I do at the division office. And so that's the process that's under, underway today slash tomorrow. Principals started getting those preview lists today. And I know CHS, because they're the biggest, they'll get their list tomorrow. They'll, will be the last one to get their, their preview list. But that's all we can do.
So Kim, I just had a quick question. Of the 1,286 students who are currently on the waitlist, will the 414 that, that will be added, will those students be taken off of that waitlist?
Right. So what happens is as soon as the students are assigned the seats, we get the information back from Versatrans. And so we've actually done, we have a weekly group that's been meeting Pat Cuomo and Patrick Mokta-Zimmer from his team this past year. I mean, part of the problem is the systems were never designed to deal with these types of situations. So one of the things that we've done is with Pat and Patrick's help, we've added fields. We've done custom screens in Power School and added fields to help the schools be able to indicate the transportation. The first, the families weigh in with their transportation requests. And then there's a status field that we can change in ways that was never, that was never there before. So we now, there was never an option before for assigned to waitlist. So when we get the data back from Versatrans after this next round of routes, all those students who are now assigned to bus, their bus information will be there and they will no longer, longer be in the assigned to waitlist category. So we'll see the list get shorter and we just keep working the lists.
Are they prior, I assume they're prioritized?
They are. So higher, you know, there are certain programs that we receive funding for where transportation cannot be a barrier. And there are legally, legal mandates as well in those, for those programs, those students are priority one. And then priority two tend to be siblings of those so that we don't have a, and then who need, and then again, we start to get into the who cannot get to school without transportation. Those tend to be what you consider the priority twos. And then an L students, you know, high, high need and cannot get to school any other way. That kind of defines category two. And then let's, there are a lot of families who need transportation that don't fall in those categories. It's just very hard for them to get their students to school with their work situations or whatever. So, you know, we're working all the, all the categories, but that is, there, there are, we have to prioritize because of the limited resource.
Of course.
Ms. Perry, any questions? Anybody else down this way to my right?
Mr. Williams, I had a quick question. So thank you for what you're doing at, at your level. And then thank you also for compressing the training time from two months to hopefully three weeks. But I was curious of the, the six and, and nine new applicants that you mentioned from start to finish and behind the bus, what is the timeframe of that?
Normally the city's duration is about two months, but we're trying to compress that. That was the, that's the number I've given you. And we're trying to get that into about three weeks. It's going to take a Herculean effort, timing. There's a background check that has to happen. So that actually. So that actually, we don't control that component of it. We can put in, and it, you know, hopefully we get it back as soon, but we have seen it take a month to get the criminal background check done. And then we also, as soon as we get the applicant, we put in a request to DMV to give the test. That has also been slow to come in garnering all of the tests we need. But we're, our efforts have been fruitful lately. We've, we've, we've found a contact and we've, we've been able to get our folks in the, the door. But it's still a couple of weeks out. We're, we're working at as fast as we can.
I know that one of my colleagues had reached out to Delegate Hudson and who had then reached out to DMV to try and help with that part of the process. So please let us know if you continue to hit barriers there and we'd be happy to reach out to Delegate Hudson again.
I believe that, you know, we, we've got the system in place now and we're, we're working through it. It's just still the timing of it. You still have to have a slot.
Great, thank you.
Really quickly, do, do these applicants need to be vaccinated?
We are, they do not have to be vaccinated. We are, we have multiple opportunities for them to do so at CAT. We also have our own testing at CAT every two weeks. So we have provided an opportunity for them and we're providing all the PPE that we possibly can. We've worked with Kim and her team and we've done everything we think we, that is feasible for us to, to make sure that the environment is as safe as possible. We're doing cleanups in the middle of after runs, we're, we're doing all of the safety precautions that we think we require to do and also going above and beyond with additional cleanings.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you both. I, I do want to again acknowledge just all of the work and, and the teamwork from community members who are helping out with, with driving, picking up kids, teachers who are, are driving before and after school to take kids. So again, this is principals, central office staff. Some of the ladies behind, behind us here driving. So this is, again, it's, it's a huge effort. And I, I too am, am losing sleep over this, literally. And again, appreciate it if there's anybody in the community who has contacts and I'm pitching for private vans, private vehicles to help out, who are interested in, in teaming up with me to drive a, a private van to, to, you know, take some kids. Please reach out to us or reach out to whoever you can, again, ideas. This is, this is what it takes, again, is, is everybody working together. And, and again, there aren't enough words to express the gratitude in, in getting the students to the building. I've met some wonderful kids in the last couple of weeks and I'm grateful for that. And a sweet third grader, listening to her say, thank you so much, but I, I just want to ride the bus with my friends, you know? So looking forward to that part of it. It, it's, anyway, so I appreciate you both. And again, I, everybody is working before school started, night and day, after hours, weekends on, on trying to, you know, do what we can for transportation. So again, thank you both.
You're very welcome, but I would just say that we are all trying to make sure that this doesn't happen again. So we have to, there's no easy button, unfortunately. So we need to grow our way out of this and put a plan in place. And we have a recruiting program that is year round. What we have seen is there've been starts and stops. We can't do that anymore. We've got to continue to recruit all year, over recruit, because you know, we'll lose folks. And when, and in the process, we know that unfortunately, there may be a time when we have one or two drivers down because of an illness or whatever. And we need to be able to have an ample number of relief drivers that are, our margins have been razor thin in the past. We can't continue to operate like that and make sure that we have reliable transportation services for our children. So hopefully we'll be able to grow out of this. And eventually, the number needs to be higher than thirty-five to make the numbers really work. We're really talking about a forty to forty-two system, drivers allowing us to have an opportunity for folks to take off when they want to do so. And we'll be able to backfill and provide reliable transportation.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Also, I don't want to overlook the fact, bus drivers that are currently driving our buses, thank you so much. You are appreciated from all of us and all of the students. So thank you every day. Thank you, sir. All right, next item, we have our twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two student representatives to the school board. Dr. Beth Baptist.
Madam Chair, members of the board, Mr. Henderson, this is a lot more fun to talk about than COVID. I think it's a wonderful activity that the board several years ago voted to have student members on the school board. And I think each school board member that we've had has been awesome. And we're very happy to welcome tonight, already welcomed Leila Abdul Salam. We're, thank you for being with us. We will also have two other members. Leila will be with us for three meetings and then we'll have Rachel for three meetings and then Anya for three meetings. So if the board would vote to accept these three student members, then we will have the student members for the board for the twenty-one, twenty-two school year.
I moved that we approve the selection of these student representatives to the board.
Now a second.
Any question, discussion? All in favor?
Hi.
Any opposed? Great, thank you.
So Leila's official.
All right, and next we do have our program, twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two program of study revision. Dr. Odie.
Madam Chair, members of the board, Mr. Henderson, good evening. This, at this time, I would like to bring forward our, two of our principals, Dr. Irazary and Mr. Jordan, our new Buford principal, to present some requested revisions for our twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two program of study. So Dr. Irazary, we'll get us started.
For chair of school board, Mr. Henderson, thank you. I want to take just a minute to, before Leila leaves. Hey, Leila, caught you. Come over here for a sec. I just want to introduce all of our school, now take, take your giant book and your book back, this. Leila is a senior, a senior, she's one of our avid students. She's currently helping us with our ESL mentoring program. She's also president of the Chinese Club and is involved in MRC and C4K in our community. So we are so lucky to have her and she's going to be starting off this rotation of school board members. So I know mom's waiting, so thank you. We also have Kayla Booker, who is an avid student and, and an engineering student as a tenth grader. And we have Rachel Rugameo, she's a field hockey player, SCA string ensemble, youth symphony orchestra, Planned Parenthood Youth Leadership Council member and a young feminist club member. So we've got a great group of accomplished student reps. So just wanted to say thank you and thank you to them. Onto my next topic, sorry. Charlottesville High School, we will need to add a few items to make sure that we are in line with our accreditation measures for the upcoming year. So we, we'd like to make the addition of a junior, senior work-based learning program. And this program is designed to support students' long-range education and career goals, provide them an opportunity for firsthand of career or in their career or career field. And work-based learning can be a paid internship, internship, job shadowing, or anything that relates to their job field. So we'd like to give students credit because that is also part of our new accreditation model that the state will be issuing. So this is, there are two types. One is a local credit, so either a point five credit or a one full local credit. This is a class that is graded on a pass fail, it's not calculated in the student's GPA, but we do want to give them a credit for their work experience. And then the second is an edit to our CTE junior, senior internship program. This is attached to a CTE class. So for example, if a student was in our sports marketing class and was working or interning or job shadowing at UVA, they would get a CTE grade and credit for that internship or job experience. So our old program of study, it was a little bit antiquated. It was a, it was a senior internship only and it wasn't really, they didn't really have the language. We needed to be flexible to allow students more work opportunities.
So just as an example, because I, I feel like this is really, really helpful and beneficial. And I just, I want to make sure that we're letting, letting people know what their options are, very important. But like, you, you are probably familiar, like my child is, is in taking community, through the community and is just in the evenings and not during school day, not through K tech. And so is that going to be something that like, is it a WBL?
Sorry, work-based learning, yep.
Work-based learning, so it's like you're taking the CMT, it's firefighting, it's paramedic career. So you're going to be, but it's at night, but you'll still.
We'd like to do that. This would offer us some flexibility to give local credits to some of our students who are engaged in either work, you know, over the weekend or in the evenings. So if, if we approve this, we're going to work with our counselors to start identifying students that are participating in, you know, whether it's internships, paid internships, job shadowing, that extends outside of the school, uh, school day as well. Because we know that many of our students, it's very difficult for them to have a full schedule and then also do an internship at some point during the actual school day. So this will hopefully provide us a little more flexibility for our students.
That's really impressive. So you're forward thinking this about this.
Any other questions, board members about these?
I just had a quick question. Terms of the outside of school hours internship, so how would that be monitored?
So just like we, we, we've done this in the past with internships and, and, and work experiences, they would have to provide some sort of documentation that they are currently, either that could be a pay stub, that could be something signed or, you know, a time sheets signed by whatever organization they're working with. So whatever we've used for our internships in the past, we do similar items to make sure that we're tracking. We have a co-op, our, our CTE marketing co-op, which provides a little more detail that has to be, that would have to be a pay stub from that employer. But this would open it up to job shadowing, which you wouldn't have a pay stub, but you would need some documentation from that organization that, the hours that you're there and also that you're still participating in a program or in that internship.
So are, are these things, these experiences, things that the students are finding on their own? Or are they, is there a way to match them up with their interests for internships?
Yeah, it could be both. So one great example is we have the Trailblazer program, which is run through the Jeff School. And right now, because of our program of study, and we can change this i- if and when this is approved, we had to count the work that they're doing at the Jeff School and the Trailblazers as an independent study as opposed to an internship. Because we, it was marked specifically internship and related more specifically to their CTE program. So our Trailblazers are concurrently working with our African-American history, uh, history class with Mr. Johnson and Ms. Brown. So this would allow them to get not, not on, not an independent study, but actually what it truly is, is a paid internship credit, because they are being paid by Jeff School and they're working some inside school hours, but also on the weekends and after school as well.
Any other questions? Okay. Thank you, Dr. Irazary.
Mr. Jordan.
For everybody, I'm sorry, excuse me, I did want to introduce you again. I know Dr. Odie did, but this is Mr. Rodney Jordan, our principal at Buford Middle School. So thank you.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board, Mr. Henderson. Thank you all for having me here this evening. At Buford, our seventh and eighth graders have an opportunity to take intro to urban farming. And we just needed to update our course code from eighteen weeks to thirty-six weeks. This is to align with the agricultural education program at CHS. Our students at Buford can earn a high school CTE credit in urban farming and access to more agricultural-based courses.
Thank you. Any questions from anybody? And my understanding is this is info and action tonight. Is everybody comfortable with that? This is info and action this evening. Is everybody comfortable with that? And if anybody does, no further questions or comments, then I would.
So moved, I'll move the approval of the program of study revisions.
Second by Mr. Wade, any questions? All right, all in favor?
Hi. Hi.
Any opposed? All right, thank you both.
Thank you all.
Next up, we have our twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two advisory committees to the school board. Dr. Beth Baptist.
Madam Chair, members of the board, Mr. Henderson. Another fun thing to do is to recognize all of the advisory committees that we have for various groups for the school board. We have gifted education, special ed advisory, school health advisory, the Title I parent advisory and the CTE advisory committees. And each September, we bring these lists of names to you to approve for these community members or staff members and parents, whoever, to serve on these advisory committees to the board. So I would ask if you have any questions about any of them and then if you would approve these so that these members can start with the various committees.
Any questions from board members?
Move the approval of the committee advisory members.
Second that.
Any questions, comments? Just want to say thank you. It looks like somebody's done some work to reach out for the CAC committee and get some good representation from the different schools.
Miss Lee was responsible for working with that.
Yeah, so thank you for that. All right, all in favor? Hi. Any opposed? Great, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, and then we have our twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two enrollment update.
Good evening again. So this update's going to be straightforward compared to transportation and there's no real, there's no bad news in this. So that's good. This is a snapshot of where we are, our total enrollment as of August thirtieth. That's when I pulled the numbers, four thousand two hundred and eighty-four. Just K twelve is four thousand seventy-six. Our total serving number, and that's also equivalent to what we call average daily membership or ADM. Those are the students that are served in our buildings. We have quite a few students that we're responsible for, but they're not served in our buildings. That's the difference between general enrollment and what we call ADM. So that three thousand nine hundred and ninety is our ADM just for K twelve. And so just for reference, we're about thirty-three students over what we, what we, what we set our budget for. So we're, we're, that's a good place to land. From a staffing standpoint, you don't, you never want to be, you know, too, too high or too low. And certainly from a state revenue standpoint, you never want to be too high or too low. So we're, we're pleased with where these numbers are sitting as of August thirtieth. All that said, enrollment, ADM, they fluctuate throughout the year. And when it comes to ADM for our state revenue, the true test is the March number. That's the snapshot that counts. Your entire revenue, your revenue for the entire year is adjusted based on where things are in March. So this is something we keep an eye on throughout the year. Next slide, Leslie. So here, here are the numbers by school. And again, this is our overall, this is the enrollment number. And it does not include students pending an info snap. And I want to say Greenbrier in particular, I believe they had the most students pending an info snap. That means that there's a registration in process, but they don't have all of the paperwork yet. And sometimes that takes a little longer for some families than others to get all that paperwork in. So again, the numbers will fluctuate. And the next slide. Again, the numbers will fluctuate. And the next slide. So this is the average class size numbers, which are particularly important for K through three, because we have state funding. That is tied to meeting, meeting certain target average class sizes and those targets are in parentheses beside the name of each of the elementary schools. These target class sizes are based on the free and reduced lunch eligibility for the school. And so um, you can see that we're, we're in good shape with our, this is again, a huge thing for us in finance. To, you know, make those enrollment projections, which make the staffing determinations that influence our budget process each year and then to see us. You know, pretty much land where we're supposed to, that's a big deal. Um, I do want to add that, say, for example, Clark second grade has nineteen average class size and. And you're looking at their target is nineteen and you think, sure, that's a little tight. It's not quite as tight as it may appear at first glance, because these numbers are done with a very basic calculation. Of homeroom teachers and total students in the grade. But all of the resource and specialist teachers like art, PE, reading specialists, they also come to bear in the, in the true calculations when you report to the state. So fractions of those teachers. So for example, if I'm a PE teacher serving four grades, twenty-five percent of me is counted as an FTE and that brings those. Ratios, that makes the ratios even more favorable, is what I'm trying to say. So. But that's where we stand as of August thirtieth. And I believe that was the last slide in the deck. So I'm happy to take any questions.
Where is virtual put into?
So that is a very good question, because um, they would be in my enrollment numbers.
The three nine nine zero.
They are, because they're attributed. So that would also make our numbers better, because I would need to take the virtual teacher and spread that across. It's a great question, Ms. McKeever, and I had not thought about virtual. I was pulling the numbers directly from Power School and just doing the, the, the basic math. But um, that would only help those class ratio numbers. That's a very good point.
I, I'm just wondering also with respect to pre-K, how our numbers look there. Um. In term, I know that that's not part of like a traditional enrollment report, but maybe next month we could have like additional information. First of all, like with the ten-day report, because I think we start on the twenty-first, so the thirtieth isn't quite ten days.
That's correct. This is a very early report. In fact, I look back and last year, we didn't give this report until later, but it was on the list of things to prepare, so. Wasn't hard to do. Um, but we can certainly look at this again and we can include pre-K.
I just think like enrollment is going to continue to be kind of like one of those things that is going to drive a lot of conversations in the city. So um, just having a handle on these numbers is going to be.
And there is another official number that's reported to the state and it's the September thirty number. So that fall number. What that will do, the September thirty number starts to inform how our, our EDIs look each month until March. And then in March. They, they do a retroactive adjustment, they net it all out. March is the number that really matters, but September thirtieth is also an important snapshot. So if I may suggest, um, October would be a good time to give another update, because I think the numbers will be more settled in general, a little less fluid perhaps. And it'll be referencing the data that we use for that official snapshot for the state.
I mean, it can be just a written report, doesn't need to be like a, you know, so yeah, that would be very helpful just to kind of have that overall.
Sure thing. And I'll be sure to uh, give more information on preschool in that update.
I have a question. Um, the, when you were showing the elementary school enrollment and you showed the average class size or the target. Where does that number come from again?
The target?
Yeah, the one that was in parentheses.
That is, um, it's, it's a prescribed number from the state based on the free and reduced lunch population of the school. That's what drives those targets. And then when we get our state revenues, there's a, a funding line called K three class size reduction. That's directly tied to us meeting those um, class, those average class sizes. And that, that's a longstanding, that's nothing new. That's. Been happening and those numbers haven't really moved since I've been here, except maybe Jackson via maybe used to be at twenty-two and now they're at twenty-one, but. Or they were twenty and they went to twenty-one. That, only one of them I think has moved in the seven years I've been here. They don't change very often.
But our internal, when we're doing class sizes, it caps off before we get to that twenty-some, twenty-four number most of the time?
Well, most of the time, I mean, we don't like to, twenty-four is definitely the top end for us, um, for elementary class sizes. We, we don't like to see anything go over that.
Any other questions? I was curious, you mentioned Greenbrier. Do you have a sense if, if those enroll, those pending enrollments are spread out? Or if they're going to hit one grade?
I think they're going to be more in kindergarten, but the good news is they have, Greenbrier has capacity for it. So when I bring that up. I brought it up in the sense that if you think Greenbrier's look, numbers look a little low, we recognize that as well. But Greenbrier actually, it, if you take last year out, because it just wasn't typical in any way, but like years prior, I remember that. Greenbrier, for whatever reason, sometimes the enrollments did come in a little, little bit later there.
And then I know you mentioned before, I'm sorry, hold on.
Uh, no, you go. I just happened to ask.
That you, you've done a pretty excellent job as far as um, keeping in touch with um, the city and other growth or uh. Developments that might impact families moving in and enrollment numbers. Do you see anything or have you seen anything? Are we watching anything?
Jackson Via. Um, I believe Jackson Via is the school we need to watch. It's been the school that's been hitting their numbers most consistently and being a little on the high side of them. And it's the South First Street um, redevelopment. That actually involves an expansion of units. It's not just redeveloping units that are there, but they're going to be. Building additional units. Um, and where I think what is now the garden space. And then my understanding is then the, once those are done, then they renovate the older units. And so it's a, it's a net increase in units there. That's going to impact um, Jackson Via. Um, so there's just a lot of that's going on in that area. Um, so that's the one that I am um, keep, keeping an eye on. The good news with six elementary schools, sometimes just a slight adjustment in, in boundary lines can make a big difference. The other good news is, I'm always looking for, for the good news. Uh, Jackson Via is not Clark. There's plenty of open space if we need to do uh, place modulators. Not that that's a, a long-term solution. But I will say that um, we already had done some site planning for that a while back. When we had a little growth bubble there a few years ago and they recall. So we went ahead and did uh, work with Mike Goddard at the city and went ahead and did the site planning in case we needed. To act quickly to place modulators. Those are the types of things we have to think about.
There's a new development. I don't know how many units are, um, but right by Tractor Supply, um, which would go to Burnley Moran.
Moran.
And yeah, I haven't, I mean, that went up fast, really, really quickly. And I don't recall how many units that are, that is, or how that might impact.
I have a spreadsheet that I've been trying to work, well, the city publishes something. It used to be quarterly. Now it's not quite on a quarterly schedule, but it's like a. In prog, approved, not yet in construction and in progress and an under construction. There are three worksheets that's available on their website. Um, I'm trying to get in a situation with them where we can work more fluidly and I can get that not in a PDF. So that it can, um, it can actually calculate the projected students. So that we don't have to put those yield ratios in and, and work from a PDF document. Julie's looking at me because she has to do that with me, but. Um, I'm hopeful we'll become a little more fluid in that process.
Thank you, Ms. Perrier.
Um, my question piggybacks on uh, Ms. Torres's question. With you saying that you would be bringing something similar to this back in October. And given what is going on and the fluidity of additional students coming to our school division. Because of things that are currently going on um, in this country and with us being um, having international neighbors and our international refugee um, committee, community. Those numbers that you give us in October. Will be what they are, but they could potentially shift after you give them. And I'm thinking that maybe if you gave us that report in November, it would be. Slightly more accurate. I, you know, to come back, you know, September, October, November with the same report is fine, but. If doing it in November is more accurate because of what's going on nationally. I would find that to be more beneficial to me personally, so.
And that's, we can certainly do that. And I think maybe the way we could handle it is if, if there's nothing moving that is um. I mean, having it closer to budget time is a good thing. It would be part of your budget briefing in December anyway. But certainly if anything starts to shift dramatically, we would want to update you sooner than later.
Fine, thank you. Any other questions? All right, thank you, ma'am. Okay, um, we have our proposed budget calendar. That's because Ms. Hoover is not here today.
It's okay, sorry. Um. So thank you. I'm happy to represent this item for our finance director, Mr. Renee Hoover, who is hopefully enjoying some well-deserved time off this weekend and. Getting a second wind before we head into the annual school report and lots of other fun September activities. And you'll see when this calendar comes up, we haven't made a lot of changes, but there are some, some different things on here that for, um, I'll just step through quickly. So um. We are starting the process with the presentation of the calendar as we always do. The joint meeting with council. Uh, in, in mid-September, that is new. And I think it's, it's a, going to be a very important meeting. In the context of discussing reconfiguration and, and but, and the impacts overall for budget. So looking forward to that. And then there is a work session in September twenty-first to talk about um, the use of the ARPA-SR funds. So those are, those are new things. Um, those are very important. And then you guys, you all will approve the budget calendar to your regular meeting in October. Pending any changes you'd like to suggest this evening. We also noted on here, the CIP committee meeting. This is something that um. You know, has always occurred in the past, but because as we talk about reconfiguration, the interplay of the capital budget and the operating budget is becoming something that's. More and more important in the operating budget process. So we thought it would be good to show uh, when the CIP committee is scheduled to meet. And you have two, uh, two representatives on that committee. Then we get into talking about more of our routine internal process where we distribute budget materials to our principals and other budget stakeholders in the division. We have a principals meeting where budget is one of the topics where we, we give them an update and we, um, we. Talk about how they, making sure they get all their requests in. And then we have a deadline where we need to get all that internal stakeholder feedback to us. You have your regular school board meeting in December, of course. And then there is the December work session. We've historically called that the data meeting. Because it is a time where we try to give you a lot of basic basis or foundational information that'll form the. That's, that informs a lot of discussion that takes off like a rocket starting in January. So we, we get past that December work session. Um, another thing that is different, well, we do have the, the, the January work session, of course, is the big one. And I want to talk about the PTO. Interactions, because we did tweak that a little bit this year. In the past, we would try to, you know, do a session at elementary school. Session at CHS and a session at for Buford Walker. And some of the sessions would be before that Saturday work session and some of them would be after. And there was a little bit of an awkwardness in there because. For, they didn't hear the same information. And also we usually didn't have the briefing of the PTO presidents collectively until after the work session. And so in looking at this this year with Renee and with Leslie. We decided that it would be a good move to brief the PTO, PTO presidents all together to have that briefing. Then they could start the outreach to their, their PTO membership. And then have one really well-coordinated PTO um, parent outreach session, if you will, that the PTOs would collectively. Help promote for us to really get the word out. And with Zoom, this is the big change. We feel like we can, you know, offer this session, use Zoom, the way we've. Become so adept at using it and making, or make it a really meaningful session that will hopefully reach a lot more families. So we're, we would like to try that. That's one of, that is another, besides the changes in September where we have more meetings and um, there's a lot of those are meetings that you all requested. This, this tweak with how we work with the PTOs is another change I want to highlight. And then um, continuing on from there, I don't think there's really any changes to our normal process. We did keep. Um, the same number of work sessions we had last year and talking with um, Chairman Torres. At this point, with the com, the complexities we know that lie ahead with, with our budget. We think that probably we, those work sessions will be necessary, but of course, if we find that everything is all worked out and we don't need one of these later work sessions. We will all be happy to, to uh, remove that from our calendars, but better, best to have the placeholders out there for now. I'm happy to entertain any questions you may have, Jennifer.
So I just have a couple of thoughts about the calendar. Um, mostly um, conflicts, like the budget work session in January is on the fifteenth, which is a three-day weekend for the city of Charlottesville.
Yes.
School division. And I, I just feel like that we should change that.
So um, it historically is that three-day weekend. Um, I only know that because we usually work incredibly hard getting ready for that work session and then. We're usually like, it's a, it's a long weekend afterwards, but that is just a matter of. It's the way it's been done and it can certainly be changed.
I mean, it's up to the board. I don't really, I don't, I. Uh, you know, it's just one of those times like, I don't know, maybe your family goes away, maybe whatever. Um, and so I think I make this regularly routinely like the. Like suggestion that we move that meeting, but um, who, I'm just one person.
So that's just one comment. If you were to change it, I would suggest going one Saturday later.
Yeah.
And looking at that date, um, because you, because it is a very intense time in the budget development process that January, February window is. Is the most intense time.
Yeah.
Um, if we do shift it, then that will be um, potentially, let's see, when we find those PTO, yeah, then that would have a little bit of a ripple effect with the outreach to the PTOs. So um. And because we wouldn't, we, I think that there's so many important decisions. There's, there's a lot of direction setting during that Saturday work session. And then that's the direction that we, we really want to make sure the public understands. And so um, I think that would. It would push the PTO outreach a bit.
I mean, this is just here for information. This is for information for you all. I mean, if I'm the only one, then um, that's fine. Um, so I do.
Maybe we just poll people and see if somebody really has, has a conflict with that weekend. You know, because it may be, it may be totally fine.
And we don't know yet. Our city council school board, that's in January as well.
Correct. That's true. And that is another good point, because I believe you all, you typically want to make sure you've had. Your work session to come together around the board direction before you enter into that joint session with council. That's another great point to keep in mind.
I also think as we are um, receive this information, we should add to our calendars, the city council work session, budget work sessions. That happen starting in February through May.
Yeah, they've already had some very interesting and important discussions. It's a great point, Ms. McKeever. So I'll work with Ms. Thacker and see if we can incorporate that and have those meetings embedded in the calendar. We won't, we will no longer have a one-page calendar, but that's okay. Those are important dates.
I see that you tried to.
There's something about that one page, but yeah.
It is, and I agree and thank you for that. I know that we've worked hard to try and um. Kind of share those meetings out, um, at least last year, maybe the year before, just so, so board members could tune in. I mean, I do feel like it's. It's always important every year for us to be.
They often change those or cancel them. Is what I found too, but you know, I think it's a good effort to, to include them now, knowing that that could well happen.
And that, that's a good point. We can try to, um, even if it's fluid on our, on our website, because I think the public also will want to, if we can help them stay informed. If those meetings are changing. So either way, great suggestion and great comment. We can just work to include that and stay on top of it as best we can to embed it into our calendar.
This isn't the exactly, you know, for this calendar, but just for Dr. Gurley's sake, to know that we often, we will have um, two-by-two uh, sessions. With the superintendent. Um, and I guess that's usually in January, isn't it?
Typically, it's been.
Early January.
Well, it, December is what Leslie.
It usually guides the process up for the superintendent to develop the purpose.
It is, it helps to, it helps, yeah, it does. It, it's, there's an initial, the two-by-twos. Ensure that we get, you know, it, when we're getting the input from the other, from the internal stakeholders, um, that meeting principals and department heads. Then it gives the same, um, you know. meeting principals and department heads, then it gives the same, you know, forum and opportunity for you all.
Any other questions, comments? So, I'll reach out to everybody and we can think a little bit more about the weekend in January.
One of the other things we asked is if we, if you wanted to consider not having it on a Saturday, kind of thinking like Ms. McKeever, is this something that we're just continuing to do? Or does it really make sense? And we're, staff is really open. I think, I'll speak for both Renee and myself, and unfortunately for Leslie as well, and Julia, they're very involved with preparations for that Saturday work session. We're used, we're used to it. We don't, so we don't make plans for around, you know, even winter break, when the governor's budget comes out, we just know there are limits to what we can plan to do, you know, otherwise, just because those are important deadlines in the, in the year of the budget calendar.
It'd be useful to ask Dr. Gurley once he comes on board to what might work for him and his process.
We talked about that when we were developing this draft. We wonder, I wonder what new perspective our new leader will bring. So, but this is, again, just an information item tonight, time to get the ball rolling. So, thank you.
Are we at comments? Yes, does anybody have any comments on our written reports? Okay. All right, then we are at our next opportunity for comments from members of the community. So, again, we do have a couple of people remaining in the media center here, and I'm not sure Mr. Como can check in online, but this would be an opportunity for you to comment for up to three minutes, and if so, please state your name and address. And as always, we're always available via email to share comments, ask questions, share concerns.
And Madam Chair, we did have one hand up in the attendees. The name was Beth Ike, and so Beth, I've promoted you to this stage. You should be able to unmute yourself at this time for a three-minute comment.
Okay, thank you so much. My name is Beth Ike. I live at 802 St. Clair Avenue. I want to first welcome our new superintendent. So exciting. Thank you to the committee. I'm particularly looking forward to a new vision of leadership at CCS, and you seem like a great guy to bring it forward. So, thank you for coming to Charlottesville. Thanks to VMDO for the beautifully detailed presentation on reconfiguration. It's exciting to see things like geothermal heating and cooling being introduced. I'm really grateful for all the environmental concerns that have been included in the design process, and also grateful to see the timing of the process as it was illustrated shows the effects of local and state funding and political issues. It was really comprehensive, and I was super impressed, down to the Martin Luther King quote at the very end. I loved it. COVID testing, I'm curious if the district has reached out to UVA to talk to them about the wastewater testing model they did last year. I feel like we brought it up, it was brought up at a school board meeting, and I can't remember if there were feasibility issues, but it seems like that would be a wonderful way to get a baseline for asymptomatic, or especially for asymptomatic potential COVID cases. On the testing front, unfortunately, the testing my third grader just went through was a little bit more painful than painless, as it was for Dr. Bishop. She reported the testing was scary. She knows it's not pass or fail, but it still has made her very anxious about third grade. I just wanted to mention that just so we keep in mind the effects of testing on our students, even though I understand data is necessary. Lastly, I want to circle back to opportunities to get, to get our kids out as outside as much as possible. Madam Chair, what I think I heard from you was encouragement to the community to source and secure things like large tents that would facilitate getting kids outside more often. I know my third grader has not been eating outside, although I'm told she will tomorrow. She reports and given me a thumbs up. Anything we can do to get our kids outside, I'm happy to help make that a possibility. I love to hear that could be a possibility. Really, I'd love to encourage us to be outside more time as the year goes on. I feel like we could work together to outfit all of our learners with appropriate gear so they can stay outside for temps below the 60s and the 50s and maybe even the 40s. So, like I said, I'm happy to do whatever they were called to, to help, including the PTO efforts to engage the community in the budget process that were just described. But I'd love to see the district put some more energy into getting our kids outside. I feel like we talked about this a lot last year. I felt like it was really difficult to get traction from the district. I'm hoping that the comments you've made, Ms. Torres, mean that maybe tents could be a possibility because it felt like that was definitively not a possibility previously. So, really getting our kids outside all the time, but certainly now, given the ongoing pandemic. Thank you again for all of your time and all of your energy. We are so lucky to have all of you helping our learners. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Ike. Anyone else, Mr. Como?
At this time, I do not see any hands raised in the attendees gallery, nor do I see any comments in the comment chat section.
All right, we'll give it a couple more seconds. All right, thank you, everybody. We're going to move on to comments from the board, and I will start down with Dr. Kraft, if I may, please.
Thank you. Well, mainly, I would like to just, again, welcome Dr. Gurley, and, you know, so excited to have you, and I think, you know, our community is very excited to just, you know, have your energy and input and begin to sort of shape the next phase of our division. So, it's all very exciting, and welcome, welcome, welcome to both of you, too. We really appreciate it. And, you know, just sitting here, you realize how the work that goes into all of the issues that have been on our agenda is just tremendous. Others have said it, I'll just say it. I think we have an amazing staff, and we, you know, couldn't really function this way without you. And in this very challenging time, you know, I feel like we're all sort of lifting the division together, and it's really wonderful to see. So, just lots of appreciation. And the only other thing, it was just something curious to me. What I've noticed since we've gone back to meeting in person, the public comments have really diminished, and I'm wondering why that is. And just kind of putting it out there, I'm wondering if people are feeling somehow less comfortable making comments in this format, but maybe that's something that you could, you know, reach out to us about and just let us know. But, you know, I really hope that we continue to have robust public comment at our meetings. It's really important, important part of what we do. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. I just have a couple items. First, again, welcome, Dr. Gurley. And just to mention that this morning was the first time I had the opportunity to visit a school. I went to Johnson Elementary School to, you know, as they're doing the parent drop-off, and I know Lee and others were at City of Promise, and man, it just felt good to, as I mentioned, to see the kids get out the car, and the activity at the school, a few kids were reluctant to leave their mom, and they were crying, just the kind of things that you typically expect. So, we're slowly getting back to normal. I think if everyone does what we have to do, I think that we can stay that way for this year. I was also able to visit Berle Miranda this evening to see their new kind of makerspace. And it was really different because my daughter went there, I don't know, seven, eight years ago, and it was a library. Now, it's completely made over, and it's phenomenal. And it's, and I know that they're still waiting on some, some items to come in, and, but already, it looks, it looks phenomenal. So, I encourage all of you to arrange a visit with Elizabeth, the principal there. The last thing I want to mention is that I was the school board rep to select the student rep, and Dr. I just mentioned the three students that we selected, but we had a whole host of wonderful students that it was really a difficult choice. We have so many students involved in so many things that, you know, they have a voice, and they want to share, which is great, and, but I'm looking forward to getting the input from the three students that we have selected. Thank you.
I don't have any comments at this time, and I look forward to formally welcoming Dr. Gurley next month.
Thank you. That's pretty good.
So, it's been a while since I've had a 6:00 AM wake-up call, but it was very exciting to get up at 11:30 and be at the bus stop with the City of Promise students this morning from 7:00 to 9:00. That's right, elementary, middle, and high school students. Thank you so much, Mr. Henderson, for joining us this morning. And we're off to a roaring start, and it's just nice to see the tradition that Mrs. Edwards started in the footprint for the students. And so, it's nice to have some traditions, and it's nice to have some new things. So, I'm wishing everyone a safe and pleasant school year.
Again, thank Dr. Gurley for coming aboard and welcome. Also, I'd like to thank all the ladies sitting at the table in the central office for your great work. Beth, I don't know how you do it. You're wearing quite a few hats. So, thank you all for your hard work, and Mr. Garland for all the great work in trying to steer bus drivers. It must be a nightmare, but he's working diligently to get students to and go to school. I said a couple of things. I had a great opportunity to visit Buford and Jacksonville first day of school, and I told Mr. Jordan when I got there, I wasn't really interested in doing the tour. I know the schools quite well. I said, "I'm here to work. What do you want me to do?" So, Mr. Mixco, Nazia, and I, we got to work to get those students, to contact those students, or go through the list of contact students who needed their shots. Ms. Perrier and I got up early this morning, went to Harder Drive, and along with Mr. Henderson, and we, you know, greeted the students and gave out snacks, and it's just good to see the kids get on the bus. You know, this 15-month pandemic, you know, just locked in and on Zoom, it was refreshing to see the kids all happy, all masked up, you know, getting on the school bus. So, that was great, a great feeling this morning. I had an opportunity to serve on a panel, Teachers in the Movement. Couple of weeks ago, I was on day one. It was about narratives and storytelling and teaching Black history. So, it was my understanding that the first day, along with another retired educator out of Richmond, she and I served on their panel, and they understand it was a great hit. So, we're interested in watching it. I did give them permission to release the video. So, if you are so inclined to go and watch the videos, it was a great opportunity to talk to the computer, and I didn't know how I looked, but anyway, they seemed to have enjoyed that first session of that workshop, three-day workshop. I just had one other brief thing, just to, about protocol. I'm not going to get in-depth about it, but I, from time to time when I'm in the community, sometimes people will come up to me and ask me questions, and I feel kind of weird. We really do appreciate people contacting the school board and so forth, but sometimes questions can be readily answered at the, at the school through the principals, assistant principals, and oftentimes when people ask, and I say, "Well, have you contacted the principal? Have you contacted the school nurse?", rather than coming directly to the school board, not that we, you know, against receiving, you know, information or emails from the public, but I think a lot of times, those questions can be resolved at the school level. So, and I often remind parents, you know, first start with the principal of that particular school of your child, or if you can't contact the principal, the assistant principal, or if there's a question regarding a medical issue, you can always contact the school nurse. So, so that way, when, when you ask me, I'm going to either tell you to do one or the other. So, that's the protocols we have in place so that those, a lot of those issues can be resolved at the school level before coming to the school board. Thank you.
I would just like to reiterate what everyone has said, and welcome, Dr. Gurley, and to also welcome Mr. Carter Gurley. We're so glad to have you all in the division. And I just want to follow up with Dr. Baptiste for the next meeting, because you're keeping up with all the COVID things. We keep hearing about states around us getting near capacity with their ICU beds, and at some point, I'm thinking about how that will affect us. And so, it's really hard to find what our ICU bed capacity is for our region or for UVA, and what percentage we are of those beds are currently in use. So, yeah, that would be helpful for the next meeting. And then I think that as a division, we are really doing the best that we can with the new law on the books with the five days a week face-to-face. But even though we're trying to get back to normal, it's still a pandemic, and Delta is different than the original COVID variant, so, or the original virus. So, I just want to reiterate that. And also, as a division, I think that it's a missed opportunity that we do not have a kindergarten through second grade opportunity for virtual because there's still parents who are uncomfortable sending their children back who can't be vaccinated because they're too young. And so, I think that that is a missed opportunity. And just to everyone in the community listening, I just want to remind everyone that we're in this together, and it's, we can only do as well as our community. We're not in a bubble. And so, it was a little concerning to see when I was out shopping for groceries or at the Target, that, to see children unmasked that were under 12, who are then going to be coming back into the schools, whole families unmasked, and college students unmasked. So, I would just like everyone to please remember to wear your mask when you're out and about because we require the mask in school, but if you're out and about and you're unmasked, you're still potentially bringing in COVID into the school. So, that was it. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you. And thank you, everybody, for your comments. Again, thank you to staff and everybody on the ground doing the work every single day. I do want to commend students as well, though, as far as mask-wearing. I have been so impressed in the buildings and the schools that I've driven by and seen kids getting on buses and in the car. So, thank you to the students for doing that because it makes a difference for all of us. And we look to work. Thank you. And now, thank you, board members, for all of your comments, and I will turn it over to Mr. Henderson for comments from you, please.
I offer a heartfelt thanks to the staff of the Charlottesville City Schools and the bus drivers for their efforts in the early weeks of the school year. Working in schools and driving buses is hard work, and during the time of COVID that we face now makes it extremely hard. Again, I truly appreciate your efforts in putting our learners first and doing all you can to make our school safe and making sure you're safe. Thanks again.
Before we move on to work session wrap-up, I do want to. Before we move on to work session wrap up, I do want to say thank you, Mr. Henderson, for, for stepping in and getting us through this period of time. I know you'll be joining us for a couple of meetings here in September, maybe via Zoom, but I just do want to say thank you for, for helping us out and coming back and spending some more time in Charlottesville. So we appreciate that and we appreciate you.
Thank you.
All right, work session wrap up. Dr. Baptist.
Ask about getting Moby for testing. And then some of the information from Kim, we may need to talk to make sure I've gotten it correctly, but looking at the enrollment numbers, whether it would be October or November or, or both. And then looking at from the budget calendar, looking at changing some of those meetings and working on that. And then Ms. Bryson Morseburger, the, did I hear you correctly, you're wanting ICU beds?
To understand like what our local capacity is, because that's been a concern, even if we're doing okay, that needing help with routine things might be an issue if all the states around us are having that their overflow might be coming this way. So that's all I couldn't, I don't know where to find that number.
I don't either, but I will see what I can find it. I can tell you there are thirty nine COVID patients in UVA hospital. But I, I'll see what I can find out regarding that. And one last thing from when I was talking about assessments. Dr. Oda reminded me also for third grade, for students who are English language learners, they would also take an assessment for that. I had forgotten that. It's not just third grade, but we were talking about third graders. So any students who are English language learners would also take the access test.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Upcoming meetings. We do have a lot. Thank you ahead of time. September fifteenth, we have a Charlottesville City School Board Joint Meeting with City Council. That is the day after our CT meeting. For Community Design Team Meeting for VMDO. Then September twenty first, we have a four thirty meeting here in the media center. That is a city school board budget work session. September twenty third, we will have another school board work session on specifically reconfiguration. And that is what VMDO and Wick mentioned this evening, as far as I'm coming back and kind of presenting the last round and information before they send that off to the clerk at city, at, at the city. And then our next regular school board meeting would be October seventh here in the meeting center. So with that, thank you, everybody. And I call this meeting adjourned.